Good evening, everybody. We've got lots of people on. Tonight is the City Council Joint Meeting with the Planning Commission. It's our regular meeting. It is 5:00 PM, Tuesday, October 6, 2020. And first thing we have is our call to order. And out of meeting accessibility, pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted to view live. City website, www.samamish.us/tv21. City YouTube is available at http://www.youtube.com/. And Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. City website again, www.samamish.us/tv21. And YouTube is www.youtube.com. Comcast 21 again within Samamish only. And Lita, would you do the roll call?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcho.
President.
Councilmember Ken Gamblyn. Councilmember Jason Ritchie. Councilmember Chris Ross. Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Councilmember Stewart's going to be delayed by about an hour.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
And then we have the members of the Planning Commission. Cartiff.
Yes.
Harmon.
President.
Mike Bresko.
President.
Josh Amato.
Here.
Larry Crandall.
Here.
Mark Baumann.
Mark Baumann's here.
And Rituja Endapura.
And Rituja's going to be just a bit late.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, everybody. Next, we've got the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilmember Trine, would you please guide us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next we've got is approval of the agenda.
Second agenda.
Okay, I have an approval and a second. Do I hear any discussion?
Discussion, please.
And whom? Okay.
Gamblyn.
Okay. And the discussion?
Yeah, I would like to remove number five for discussion, please.
Okay, and do we have a second for that? And who is making that? I'm only seeing...
Ken Gamblyn.
Okay, Ken Gamblyn. Oh, there he is. Okay. And do I have a second for that? I think it was Councilmember Ross. Okay. I have a motion on the floor and I have a second. Councilmember Gamblyn, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think it's inappropriate to be speaking to the Town Center Work Program when we are currently involved in litigation and a hearing with a Jerrin matter and in front of the Growth Management Board.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
You can tell. Okay. Okay, going back then to the approval of the agenda, less number five. Is there anything else on the agenda? Okay, back to the original motion of the approval of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Great. Okay, now we can move on to our meeting with our Planning Commission. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, Mayor Moran. Welcome to the 2020 Joint Meeting with the City Council and the Planning Commission. The purpose of this meeting tonight is to allow opportunity for the members of the Planning Commission to discuss with the City Council some of the items that will be on their work plan for the balance of the year and into the winter and spring of 2021. Tonight, we have for you, for your discussion, three items. The first is the proposed docket request for the 2021 Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Amendments. To present that to you tonight will be Miriam Leitner, our Planning Manager, and Evan Fisher, one of our management analysts. The second item is the Development Regulations Updates Phase II. Here to present that to you tonight is Sarah Astiri, one of our management analysts, with our consultant, Jeff Arango from Framework. The third item is the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study. This is an update on the process. To present that to you tonight is Miriam Leitner, and I am here to support her on that. And the fifth item was removed from the agenda, so there will be no discussion on that tonight. The purpose of the meeting is to allow for opportunity for the Planning Commission to hear from the Council what their interests are on these topics. That should help the Planning Commission guide discussion on these topics at a later date when the Commission does meet formally to discuss them. These items are important to our work plan, and we look forward to hearing commentary from all of you. As a brief reminder, for tonight, please remember that there are up to 13 elected and appointed officials in attendance, so commentary does need to be on task, and we do need to remember that we might not have opportunity for two rounds of comments on each of the issues. With that, I'll turn it back over. I guess what we'll do is we'll first start with item number one, which is the proposed docket requests. And I'll turn it over to Miriam Leitner and Evan Fisher for that presentation first, and that'll be followed by opportunity for questions and discussion with the Council and the Commission.
Great, thank you, David. I will pull up a screen share. I'm having connectivity issues. I'm going to leave my camera off to make sure that I don't get bumped during the meeting. Looks like my screen is sharing, so I'll get started.
And Evan, hold on one sec. We're going to make sure to turn your volume up so that we can all hear you.
Okay.
That's much better. Thank you.
Yep, okay. Good evening, City Council and Planning Commission. For those who don't know me, my name is Evan Fisher, and I'm a management analyst with DCV. Tonight, we are starting review of the 2021 docket requests. Tonight's session is informational, and that's for you to become more familiar with the docket requests and provide you an opportunity to ask those questions. I want to start tonight with a quick review of the amendment process and provide context before reviewing this year's docket requests. As you know, Samamish operates under the Growth Management Act, or GMA, which is a state law that mandates coordinated and planned growth and land use planning. On screen, you see the 14 goals of the GMA. These goals feed into the required and optional elements for each city's comprehensive plan, including ours. The comprehensive plan, along with state and federal regulations, are what guide the development of our code, including the development regulations. The annual docket determines the list of items that will go through review by the Planning Commission and City Council as possible amendments to the comprehensive plan or the development regulations. The annual docket process allows two types of amendments to be proposed. They are text amendments to change the text of the comprehensive plan or the development regulations within the Samamish Municipal Code, and they're also site-specific land use map amendments. This year's docket request includes text amendments to the development regulations, so we will set aside the site-specific land use map amendments. Quickly, I want to go through key dates for the docket request review and briefly discuss the criteria for you to consider when thinking about the docket request. The first step in the process is deciding which proposals should be put on the docket for consideration in 2021. After tonight's joint session, the Planning Commission will have a public hearing and will be asked to make a recommendation to City Council on November 5. City Council will have a public hearing and a resolution to set the docket on December 1. Staff will make recommendations to the Planning Commission and the City Council that will be shared during these meetings in November and December. Any docketed items will be considered in 2021 during legislative review of the individual There are important criteria to consider when reviewing potential docket items. Those criteria are listed on screen now. Per Title 24A, the staff recommendations, which you will receive at the next meetings, will evaluate each request based on alignment with work plan items, budget and staff availability to complete a full review of the proposals, and consistency with the city's current policies and programmatic priorities. Again, as this is just an informational meeting, there are no decisions being made tonight, but it's important to keep these criteria in mind as we move forward. Now, we'll take a look at the docket requests we received. This year's proposal is a request submitted by two citizens to amend the Samamish Municipal Code Development Regulations. This request included many different text amendments, so to streamline the review, we have organized the amendments into the overarching themes, as you see on screen. I'll be going over each of these themes in more detail in the next slide. The first area proposed requests relates to environmentally critical areas. There are four requests in this category, and on screen, you see the first two. I will give you a few moments to read through these. And here are the last two proposals related to environmentally critical areas. Again, a few moments. It's important to note, the applicant submitted these amendments and stated the need to set more stringent restrictions in environmentally critical areas. The applicant also states the importance of alerting members of the public and potential buyers to the development limitations of critical areas. The next items are code corrections and clarifications. Please take a few moments to look these over. The applicant provided the following reasoning for these corrections and clarifications. In regards to 2A, critical area tract protections should not exclude landslide hazard areas that are smaller than one acre, as limiting use of these protections could put neighbors, occupants, and the environment at risk. In regards to 2B, native growth protection easements have existed prior to incorporation and still exist within the city and should be defined within the SMC. And they state that... For 2C, the word "sensitive" appears 24 times in the SMC, however, it is no longer defined since "sensitive areas" was renamed as environmentally critical areas. References to sensitive areas remain in the SMC and need to be clarified and defined. And finally, the third set of amendments has to include steep slopes. The applicant stated that increased protections are needed around steep slopes to protect the environment as well as property owners and movers. As a reminder, on screen are the dates of the next Planning Commission and City Council meetings. Staff's job during this process is to make sure you have the information you need to make your decision. Please ask questions tonight, or feel free to call or email us, and we will get the answers you need. With that, I will open things up for questions. Thank you.
I had a question.
Yes, Larry?
Oh, Larry, Planning Commission. I just made a note, and I didn't understand in the back about two slides, it said square footage footprint. Is that a new term I just learned, or the back, I think, two something? Maybe one more backwards. I can't remember if it said that. Yeah, the last few, minimum square footage footprint, it just seemed, that's a new term to me.
Evan, could you comment on that?
Yeah, Evan, I can jump in here. This is David Pyle. I'll go ahead and turn my camera on. What they're asking here, I believe, is that in the city's reasonable use exceptions allowance in 21A50, it allows for the minimum necessary to establish a reasonable use of property within a critical area. So if you had a site that was entirely encumbered by, say, a wetland and wetland buffer, or a steep slope and steep slope buffers, or any other critical area, for that matter, that would restrict the use of the property, the critical areas rules allow for an exception to develop a reasonable use of that property, and it's the minimum necessary to establish the reasonable use. Other cities have gone through the process of setting a minimum square footage expectation. Here in Samamish, we typically require that a proposed builder or property owner who wants to develop on a property that is highly encumbered with critical areas does a neighborhood analysis that provides us information on the above-grade living area of the homes in the neighborhood as sort of a baseline of expectation as to what reasonable use of property might be in that neighborhood. However, other cities, Bellevue is a good example, and that's one of the cities that they cite in their request, actually has a minimum square footage allowance. So for example, if you were in the R6 zone in Bellevue, and you had a piece of property that was highly encumbered by critical areas, what happens is you're given, as an entitlement, I believe it would be 1,800 square feet of buildable area on the property. So that is... What Bellevue did during the last critical areas update, as I was there and worked through many or much of this, was they did a citywide analysis around expectation by zone as to how much buildable footprint you might get on a site, and they then just inserted that in their code as a matter of entitlement. So if you were looking to build, it takes the argument about what is reasonable and what is the minimum necessary out of the equation. We commonly get caught in a loop with builders and applicants around what is the minimum allowed, and we have ended up in front of the hearing examiner on several occasions where we disagree. So just wanted to explain that. There's more detail on that. If you want to reach out to me individually, I'm happy to walk you through it.
Okay, council members and everybody on the Planning Commission. So if you want to ask a question, go over to the chat box and put in, to be in the queue, so just put in there, you know, ask question, or, you know, if you see what the Council's doing, they just put in queue, put me in the queue, so that I can see who wants to ask a question and keep you in the order of which anybody's asking. So the next step I see is Councilmember Gamblyn.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, David, so far. Hey, just a quick question on the docket item selection process. You mentioned the processes. The Planning Commission will be having a public hearing to get recommendations. They will then bring recommendations forward to the Council. Just a quick question on this is, may the Council add docket items directly themselves?
Miriam, would you mind answering that question?
Yes, I was just thinking about it. So, David, I'd be interested to hear your input on this. I believe that the process is that it has to get submitted as a docket request first. I'll defer to David on that.
Well, the Council, as a legislative body, has the ability to add things and amend items, and if the Council was to add that during the public hearing process so that people were aware of it and had opportunity to comment on it, I believe, my expectation is it would be appropriate, as the legislative body ultimately directs which items the staff are working on as part of the work plan. So it would be the appropriate time to add it to the docket. It also would be an appropriate time to take anything off of the docket that might be remnant from a past docketing process, if you wanted to do that just the same.
Yeah, that makes sense. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, next up, I have Mark Baumann.
Yeah, my question is for Evan and David. Did you get a sense with this docket item, whether it's a request that's focused around issues in the past or concern about the future? I'm trying to think about whether it's worthwhile to docket something, is it based on, you know, their concern about what's happened or what they think will happen in the future? If you got any sense of that from the application?
Evan, I'm happy to jump in here. David Pyle here. So Chair Baumann, thank you for that question. It's a really good one. My sense is that the individuals who propose these amendments are from the Inglewood and Tamarack neighborhoods, and as such, they have seen an uptick in the number of requests to build on lots that are difficult to build on. And many of these requests are looking to the future of potentially seeing more infill in those neighborhoods and throughout the city on lots that previously were not as appealing to build on. So what they're looking for is some cleanup of our code in an effort to improve the predictability of an outcome, to take away some of the loopholes that they feel exist in our code, and to make sure that public information is available through the recording process of things like notices on titles, easements, those sorts of things, dedication of tracks, et cetera, for additional restrictions, so that areas that really shouldn't be built on are not built on, and so that property owners are not mistakenly buying property that they think is developable only to fail in the development process because they find it is so restrictive.
Mark, did you have any follow-up questions on that?
Oh, that's it. Thanks, David.
Okay, next up, I have Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, somebody had to leave first.
There we go.
Anyway, sorry, I want to follow up on a question about adding things to the docket during the public hearing process. Wouldn't that circumvent our Planning Commission and not give them the opportunity to dive deep on an item, which is really what we rely on them to do?
So I think what I would like to do is follow up with legal and get clarity on what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do, and then I'll follow up with both the Planning Commission and the City Council on what they advise.
Great.
Unless these things provide guidance now.
Great, thank you. I just, you know, from a transparency perspective, I think it's best if we can get things out there so the public has more time. I know I hear a lot of complaints from people that, you know, they don't have enough time to see when things appear and to read about it and learn about it and get enough information to make comments about it, because some of this stuff is pretty complicated. So I feel like we have these processes set up, and they have a certain timeline so that we can be transparent and provide that information to the public, and again, look to our Planning Commission to be able to dive into this and get us more information. I don't want to circumvent that process.
Is there anybody else with any questions? Okay, I have Mike Bresko.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, two just quick clarification questions on 1A, 1B. It refers specifically to single-family homes, which I assume an assumption due to size of the lots. But if somebody were to do a duplex or something like that, would this also apply?
I'll jump in here, Evan. David Pyle here. So the issue here is that the city's code, as it currently stands, does not require establishment of a native growth protection easement or establishment of a tract, a native growth tract, NGPA, if you will, native growth protection area, for single-family development when the site is encumbered with a critical area. Other cities' codes require that when proposing development on a site that might have a steep slope in a buffer or a wetland in a buffer, stream in a buffer, if you will, that the area that is encumbered with a critical area and its buffer be put into a native growth protection easement for perpetuity on the title of the property. And it brands the title in a way that any subsequent owner down the line is made aware of that upon purchase. As part of the title report, they get notification of that, and it really is a helpful tool in managing land in the long term, because it identifies areas that have been purposely set aside for protection for natural resource functions and values. So this is definitely one that, you know, we support. There are others in here that, I'll just, you know, finish this response. There are a couple categories here of proposed amendments. Many of them, you know, we support, and we'll be providing more information on that. However, some of them, we support, but we see as extremely costly in terms of budget and getting to what they're asking, and also in terms of timeline. We do have a critical areas ordinance update on the horizon, and some of these, we will be suggesting be postponed until that point in time when best available science can be analyzed. We can go through the full formal process of engaging the community. The last time we updated our critical areas rules, you know, there was some dozen meetings with the Planning Commission, dozen meetings with the City Council. It's a fairly controversial topic, so we want to make sure to prepare ourselves appropriately when we do open that door.
Thank you, David. I had two for clarification, and the second one might actually play off of what you're just saying about some of the challenges with meeting the requirements. So 1B talks about maintenance inspection requirements for drainage systems, and as I read through that, I thought I'd like to know more about what sort of burden that would place on the homeowners if they were in fact able to build on that plot of land.
So this one, as I understand it, is when you're building a single-family home on a piece of property, and you are relying on low-impact development standards or pervious pavements, rain gardens, bio swales, rain, you know, that sort of thing, as features to account for compliance with your stormwater requirement, the city's stormwater rules. So what this is saying is that, you know, hey, oftentimes, these things are built, and then they're just not maintained properly. So they're not inspected. So we have, as a program, when anybody installs those features through subdivision, we actually have inspectors that go out and inspect them routinely. We have maintenance standards that are set up through covenants that are recorded onto the title of the property. So if you create a lot through subdivision, there is quite a bit you have to do down the line to maintain it, and it gets inspected. And if you were to say, take out a vegetated flow path in favor of putting in a paver patio in your backyard, well, the inspector would find that, and we have done that. We have gone through the process where we've had people take out subsequent improvements that they put in where they were supposed to have a flow control device. So, you know, that's something that we... So, you know, that's something that we, we're looking, that these proponents are looking to have added to single-family where there is not a subdivision involved in order to ensure that with change in ownership, with, you know, time, that those features are maintained. Because when they fail in neighborhoods like Tamarack and Inglewood, it does cause the downstream property owner hardship. So we just want to make sure we're fully aware of the fact that these things do require maintenance.
Okay. Thank you, David. That's all.
And then I see Mark Baughman.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a process question. So I guess I'm not exactly sure how this was submitted. You guys have kind of grouped it into a certain grouping. And I just want to clarify, my understanding would be that the planning commission could recommend and the council could choose to docket these separately or however they might choose to, even though this is sort of presented as three areas of one request that could still be taken apart if that was the choice of either the recommendation of the commission or the council?
Yes, that's correct. So it was submitted as one docket item but included many different things. And so just to make it easier for people to read through and understand, we grouped it into these categories and we numbered each individual component separately. And that way you guys are able to consider it either all as one or individually kind of like a menu, if you will.
Okay. Thank you.
And to be clear, we did work very closely with the proponents who submitted it. You know, we, it takes a few iterations to get down to the essence of what they're asking. You know, code can be complicated, policy can be complicated, and we did work fairly extensively with the proponents of these docket items in order to get to this point. It wasn't that the staff just interpreted what they were trying to say. We reached out to them, we met with them, we had several back and forths with them to try and get down to what the essence is that they were asking in order for us to better present it here for you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, we're going to keep moving forward.
So the one follow-up item that we will come back to you with will be with regard to how things can be added and the timeliness of the addition of items by the planning commission or the council to the docket. The next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the development regulations update Phase II. As promised previously, we want to maintain a continuous feedback loop between the community advisory group, the planning commission, and the city council. As described in the agenda bill, the community advisory group has been formed. We have held individual interviews with the members of the advisory group. We have held the first advisory group meeting. And from that, we were provided a list of items that the advisory group felt was important for us to consider for the code updates. So tonight, to present this list to you and to walk through the process is Sarah Steery, management analyst with Community Development, and Jeff Arango, who is the lead from our consultant group working on this. Jeff Arango is with Framework. With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, David, for a great introduction. My name is Sarah Steery. I'm management analyst with the Department of Community Development. Tonight with us, we have our consultant Jeff Arango with Framework, as David mentioned. And during tonight's meeting, Jeff will present a quick overview of the Phase II of the development regulation update, and also we will review a primary code changes topics that we will be covering during this project. So with that said, I will hand it over to Jeff to start the presentation. Thank you.
Great. Let's get this set up here. All right. Does anyone see the screen okay? Good. Great. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Jeff Arango. I'm the director of planning at Framework, and we're the consulting lead for the Phase II development regulation updates. Also on the team, we have a firm called Code Studio. They're supporting us on Unified Development Code. They're a firm based in Austin, Texas, and they pretty much exclusively propose for major cities and smaller communities around the country. So you'll get to meet them at some point later in the project. So we have a brief presentation for you. This is similar to the presentation we provided to the planning commission last week with a few slight modifications. So again, thank you for the opportunity here. So to kick things off, just a quick reminder, this project is focused exclusively on the residential areas. It does not include the town center, and it does not include the other commercial areas outside of the town center. If you look at the zoning map on the right, it would be just those areas in yellow and orange. So it does encompass the majority of the city, but it does not include the commercial areas. And this effort will build upon the updates that were completed as part of Phase I. We'll not necessarily duplicate or revisit those issues, but hope to expand and build upon that effort. Our scope of work has five tasks. First, dealing with project management. This is, you know, regular updates with city staff and coordinating subtasks and those types of things, managing the schedule. The second phase is the actual Phase II update. This is where we will actually be drafting code for consideration by the planning commission and the council, addressing all of those issues and topics that are in the longer summary documents that have also been provided. That includes the docketed items as well that we just discussed previously. The third phase is the Unified Development Code, which is basically an effort to create one spot in the municipal code for all development unit codes and regulations. Right now, one of the challenges is those code sections are scattered throughout the municipal code, making it difficult for staff to administer and enforce. And so this will bring it all under a unified structure, very consistent formatting, and hopefully improve more graphics to demonstrate specific code sections. The third task, or fourth task, is what we call Phase III scoping. This is where we're addressing some other major topics that are not included in Phase II, and I'll address those in a couple of slides about specifically what's included there at this time. And then the last task is public engagement. We have a number of activities, including the community advisory group, an online survey that we're preparing to launch here in a couple of weeks, several meetings with the planning commission and the council, and then the formal adoption process, which will include public hearings. We also have time slated for a public engagement event for the broader public to be able to attend, learn more about the project, and provide important input into the final code This is the project schedule. We had our kickoff meeting with staff in the middle of August. The project is scheduled to go a little over a year, and we concluded by the end of September 2021. Originally, we were planning to do the Phase II code updates and have those adopted earlier in March, but we decided to extend that schedule and adopt it at the same time as Unified Development Code. And part of that is just the rigorous meeting schedule and the requirement to get materials uploaded in time, as well as the challenges of adopting a major initiative during the summer season. So I think this will actually work well and allow us to integrate the Phase II development regulations with the Unified Development Code effort as well. And then from there, you can see all the other various tasks that happen throughout the project, including several subtasks for public engagement. We'll be doing a best practices review for the Unified Development Code, where we can show some examples of how other cities have addressed this issue. We'll be able to get input and feedback on that as well, and then wrap up with the scoping for the Phase III updates. Real brief, the community advisor group, as you know, has been assembled. We had our first meeting, which was well-attended. It was a great discussion. It's a big group of stakeholders who've been compiled and very knowledgeable and have great input to provide to us for this project. Their role is purely in a advisory capacity. They're there to provide input to us, to tell us their concerns and their aspirations, and sort of guide us along the way. We're scheduled to have four meetings with them, and the one-on-one interviews, which we've already conducted with, I believe, 12 out of the 13 members. But this group is more of a sounding board. They will not provide formal recommendations or vote as a group, but is there to, again, provide very important feedback and guidance about some of the way. So we're going to be addressing these Phase II code updates, a couple of different types of projects. And David kind of touched on one of them earlier. But the first is dealing with infill development on existing lots. In some cases, these are in older neighborhoods or areas that have a high concentration of critical areas, making coordination of infrastructure and development in general very challenging. Some of the issues that we've heard from stakeholders so far is coordination of infrastructure, how construction is staged so as not to impact adjacent properties. We have heard from residents that have been directly and personally impacted by adjacent development. How to deal with the restoration of private streets. In some cases, we've heard that streets have been damaged by construction equipment and not properly restored. Since those are private streets, they're going to go a little bit differently than if they were under city ownership and management. The next one deals with site management. So how is the site managed? Are you properly dealing with erosion control as conditions change? Are you adapting properly to ensure there's not adverse environmental or property impacts from that? And then how critical areas and environmental constraints are addressed is also important related to the reasonable use discussion you had a few moments ago and other issues as well. And then the other two topics are both types of subdivisions, the shortclaps, which are smaller in nature, and then the major subdivisions. And one of the major efforts will be to develop new standards for residential neighborhood design. A lot of the guidance in the code right now is more technical in nature, dealing with the requirements, legal requirements, for example, for subdivisions that don't adequately address how those subdivisions are designed and integrated with adjacent properties and to ensure that they are contributing positively to the character of community and signage. So to synthesize all of the different potential code changes that are in that longer summary document, we've developed eight different categories for each of those, and I'll kind of run through those quickly now. These are topics that have come up in our discussions with advisory commission, community group, sorry, and with city staff. And the first one is code enforcement and penalty, because this deals with the fines for development. There's, I think, a perception that some developers just simply factor in code violations and fines, and that's something that we want to address and make sure that the fines are having the intended purpose, which is compliance. It should not be enough to simply pay a fine and blatantly violate the code. How stop work orders are issued and what some of those sort of trigger points are. But a feeling like, in some cases, words should be stopped on some of these developments because of violations, and that the city needs a more straightforward and predictable process for issuing those stop work orders to make sure they're effective. And then the last one dealing with site monitoring, which I mentioned just previously, that that is a major enforcement issue. Oftentimes, I know if someone is not inspected, you go there. When construction starts, everything looks good, but then things get moved around and you start to add the issues and problems. So monitoring is an important part of that. The next topic is residential neighborhood design. So again, just specific standards for how new projects fit in with the context, contribute to the desired character of signage. We have plans to develop both subdivision standards and planned unit development code, which offers more flexibility and incentives potentially. Other topics for residential neighborhood design would be clearing and grading, how you design a site to deal and fit in with the topography instead of just simply trying to defilate it. How those residential neighborhoods interface with major arterials is an important issue and one that we can address. And then also how streets are provided, whether those are public or private streets. So how are those designed to support the needs in the neighborhoods as well as transportation and connectivity? The third topic is the protection and integration of natural features, one I think that's gotten a lot of discussion in the community recently. So topics would include tree protection, steep slopes, wetlands and buffers, aquifer recharge, protection of groundwater, and the issue of low-impact development and how stormwater is handled. And all of those issues are highly interrelated, and we hope to address them in a comprehensive manner. The fourth topic, standards for non-residential uses in residential zones. We'd be interested in some feedback on this. One of those topics is school development, which are permitted in the residential zones, but there may be somewhat inadequate standards to address that. I believe initially, school development was discussed to be part of Phase III, but there's been some discussion as well about including it in Phase II. So we would be interested in some feedback on that. Topic five is infrastructure coordination and design. This would deal with issues such as sewer and septic. So when is sewer allowed? When are sewer connections required? When is the extension of services required? Really, really important topic. Provision of water, and then this issue of streets, both public and private, including the design as well as the maintenance of those streets over time. Topic six is single-family site and building design. This would deal with issues such as height, bulk, and scale, and the relationship of building design to the public streets or private streets, and deal with access, parking, and landscaping. This will, again, build on the work of Phase I, where I know some of this was addressed. And then the potential to consider green building codes like blue green, whether that's in Phase II or Phase III. We know that that's an important topic to be considered. Topic seven is construction management.
Jeff, can I interrupt you for a second? I think, is there another slide that you want to flip forward to?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies. Yeah, we had four to a slide. Thank you. Seven is construction management. This deals specifically with the requirements on the city side for construction management plans, so submitting that to the city for approval, how the site will be managed is another important topic, issues like staging and the restoration of infrastructure. So a lot of the topics I discussed earlier, but this specifically addresses the requirements at the city level and how those are permitted, monitored, and enforced. And then the last one is the code organization and administration, and this deals with the creation of the Unified Development Code. This would address things like visual elements and graphics. The code currently is very tech-heavy, so that's something that we at Framework really enjoy doing, developing graphics flexibility in code. And I'll address that in a couple of slides in a little more detail, but making sure there is some flexibility that the standards aren't so overly rigid that it prevents a better solution or a better outcome. Where standards can be specific, we certainly want to do that. And I'll provide an example of that in a moment. And then some other just sort of technical things like updating definitions and making sure that they're consistent and clarity. So we have done 12 stakeholder interviews, and you can touch on some of the themes that come out of those, and they dovetail very closely with what I just presented. But the first is compliance and enforcement of existing regulations is a challenge. Again, property owners have lots of very personal stories about impacts from adjacent development, and feeling like the code enforcement and compliance is not keeping up with the pace of development and the pace of potential violations. Number two, that environmental sustainability is a core value in the city, and that's something that could be infused throughout the code and throughout these different phases of updates to the development regulations. We just finished a project for Bainbridge Island where this was their kind of core value as well, was the team throughout the co-planting, and we developed and designed regulations and standards for them that infuse environmental sustainability throughout that effort. And make it very clear upfront that if you're developing a community, this is something that's going to be required of you. There's a feeling that particularly some of the newer subdivisions are not consistent with signage's character. I think looking at some of the older projects and just having toured the city myself, you guys certainly know it way better than I do, but in the older sections, there tends to be this really kind of rural and woody feel. I mean, it's still sort of similar density, but just the way that the trees have been preserved has a very, very different feel than some of the newer projects. There's obviously prominent natural drainage and topography features that should be sort of celebrated in new residential neighborhoods as opposed to sort of being flattened and mass graded and vegetation being removed and things that sort of take away those natural features which are really strong character assets to the city. There's a feeling that there needs to be both predictability and flexibility with regulations. You need to continue that sort of cross purposes, but I'll provide a couple of examples of those in a moment. I do think both I do think both are important. Predictability is important for everyone involved, but also some measure of flexibility to deal with site-specific conditions or surrounding context in order to get, of course, a better outcome. There also seems to be a strong understanding that Sammish is a desirable place to live, it's attractive for growth, those conditions are going to remain, there doesn't seem to be a push to stop growth in any way, but a desire to shake them in a way that contributes more to the community and reduces some of the impacts that people are feeling. And then, the last one is just this topic of infrastructure, and that has not kept pace with the growth and coordination is a challenge, particularly in some of the older subdivisions where you're doing infill projects and there is not the adequate infrastructure in order to accommodate. So, how do you deal with that is an important topic. So, those are kind of the six main themes that have come up so far in the stakeholder interviews, and we have our next meeting with them, I believe, maybe two.
I'm 14th.
Yes, I'm 14th, thank you.
Pardon, yes.
So, these are some photos that I took, and again, I'd love to hear your input on this. These are photos of some of the older subdivisions, and you can just see the dominance of the trees, it makes you feel very wooded. Of course, it's got homes and development just like all of the other neighborhoods, but you really get a feeling that you're in this sort of special natural environment, which I think is one of the real attractive features of Sammish. And you don't really get this feeling to the same degree in some of the newer subdivisions. You know, the trees are cleared, there is often, you know, lots of landscaping planted, but it takes a while for that to fill in, and it just doesn't quite have the same look and feel of some of the older projects. So, be interested in getting your feedback on that. The next example, this is from the Bainbridge project I referenced, and it's to highlight the relationship between prescriptive standards, which are very straightforward and easy to interpret and easy to apply, and that's an important part of developing a code, but then having some flexibility to be able to address specific conditions of the site and the surrounding context is also important. And it does require some interpretation. As someone that's done a lot of code review, you know, it's great if anything can just be a checkbox, but it just doesn't quite work that way. If you think about your favorite place, you know, in Sammish or somewhere else, you know, that probably involved a lot of other issues beyond just what the code told them to do. So, starting with the example on the left, the table, those are called street typologies and frontage types. And without going into too much detail, what that means is if you're developing a site and you're on one of these streets, you figure out which street you're on. Let's say you're on a Main Street type street, and you're developing that lot. Well, this will tell you what frontage type you can use, and the frontage type is how that building or site relates to the street, what happens between the building and, say, the sidewalk. And there's different types at the top. And depending on which street you're on, you can choose which frontage type you can use, and some are not permitted, and there are prescriptive setbacks with some flexibility that are applied. So, this is an example of a very straightforward standard, and I understand that one of the issues we're dealing with is how residential neighborhoods approach or front on major arterials. So, something, a tool like this could work very well, where it's very straightforward, it's easy to understand, and everyone kind of knows within a range of what can happen there. So, that's really helpful. But other things, I think, take a little bit more flexibility. The example on the right deals with standards for site design, and again, these are things that people have to do. And so, these are standards that will have to be interpreted and applied by city staff or ultimately hearing center. And some of those are protect and repair natural systems. You know, that is something that takes some measure of discretion, and that's something that's going to maybe depend on your site. You're dealing with a site that's already been cleared, it doesn't have a lot of natural systems, then maybe it doesn't fly in the same way. You're the one that's a completely wooded site and has a lot of habitat, then you're going to have to deal with that differently. So, that's where some of the discretion comes in, and if applied appropriately, you can get a better outcome. You also have more leeway to potentially deny a project if it's not meeting standards. And again, it's up to the applicant to demonstrate that they're complying with these standards. It's not up to the city to design a project for them. This next section, it deals with Unified Development Code. This is an example from our subconsultant code studio, and you can see on the right a very well put together and structured table of contents. It's very clear, you're able to find where the different sections are, you can navigate. There's a high amount of graphics in there. So, we'll be developing both a draft and a final GDC, and we'll incorporate illustrative graphics as appropriate as part of that, and we'll also do that best practices to give up from. These are just some other examples. Again, these are also from Bainbridge. These are just maps of those frontage types or street typologies I just mentioned. These are some photographs of the characteristics of different types of streets, and then use of the frontage diagrams. And you can see down here, one of the frontage types is a dedicated buffer, and again, that's very prescriptive standard that's easy for staff to apply. Quickly on public engagement, we're going to be helping the city with communications and popular information on the Commex and Amish platform. We have our advisory committee meetings and then an online survey that we're going to be launching, I think will run for about 30 days, so that'll be a great way to get input from the broader public. We have a series of council and commission meetings, from work sessions to public meetings, public hearings and business meetings, and then that larger engagement event that will likely happen sometime in the spring. The code, Phase Three, topics that were identified in our scope, and again, I think this is subject to some discussion, flexibility for school development, looking at how we can leverage incentives to improve the development outcome, looking at housing affordability, which is something we talked a bit with the planning commission about in the advisory committee at our initial meetings, elements related to environmental sustainability and whatever topics we don't address in Phase Two. There are some environmental sustainability topics that will be in Phase Two. Opportunity to include architectural or urban design standards to really get at the heart of the desired community character in Sammish, and then other topics that are developed or brought to the surface when we're developing the Five Development Code. And with that, we can open up for discussion. We just have a couple of notes here to kind of guide that discussion around issues, challenges, opportunities, and examples of development you may have that you'd like us to see, and then this larger discussion around the defining features of the desired character in Sammish. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff, for the great presentation. And yes, please go ahead. You will open up the floor for discussion. Thanks.
Okay, I see we have some questions that are in the chat box. First, I also see Larry Crandall put in that the Seattle Storms win a fourth championship. Ninety-two to fifty-nine was the score. Awesome. Okay, so in the chat box, we have Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to go with on the advisory board, but I'm curious to see what the cross-section of participants is, because that would kind of help both planning and the city council to understand kind of the perspective that the feedback is coming from. So, go with on that advisory board.
I believe the question was, what is the makeup of the community advisory board, and what has the process been thus far with the board? So, I'll go ahead and respond to that. So, we looked to try to put together a diverse group in the community. We have, over the years, built contacts in the community with individuals who represent large builders, small builders, engineers, neighbors from projects, boards and commission applicants, who, we have a roster of board and commission applicants for those who submitted for service on boards and commissions. So, in this case, similar to development regulations update Phase One, we tried to look at the background of individuals and put together a group that represents a diverse group that can have a conversation about what their experiences are in the city, what their level of professional experience is perhaps, and what problems they see in development in the city. So, in this case, I'll let either Sarah or Jeff walk through the list of participants. It is included as an exhibit in the agenda bill for tonight. And so far, the, we, upon selection, we got an interest statement from each of the individuals. We held individual interviews with the potential participants. We formed the group, we put together a group charter, and we also held the first meeting with the community advisory group, and I'll let Jeff or Sarah fill in any of the gaps there.
So, you might be able to see this on my screen, but this is the list, and I can run through those. So, first, we have residents. We have Leslie Lardy, Mary Johnson, and Mark Cross, as well as Mary Witten, Larry LaSour as well, June Prey is a board and commission applicant, Todd Levitt, he is listed as from the master builders, but he's actually representing Murray Franklin, which is a developer. From the local and small builder category, we have Dan Usher from McPherson Construction, Bob Sorenson, who is a local architect and builder, and I have to leave off the other ones. Lynn Schneider is from Public Health in King County, and she deals with septic regulations and permitting. Jay Regis is from Sammish Plateau Water, and of course, they deal with water and sewer infrastructure. And then, finally, we have two engineers that are involved in development. We have Christian Nichols from Pace Engineers and Brett Hootis from the Blue Line Group. And so, that's the list.
Deputy Mayor Malcho, does that answer your question?
It does. I think it helps to give the public an idea that there's a very good cross-section of input coming from the community. So, thank you.
Okay, so next I have got Councilmember Treen, followed by Councilmember Gamblin.
So, my question is about kind of a definition or clarification, because you're using the word, the term "design standards" in several locations, and I'm wondering if there is a change in definition from, say, the RND, Design Standards, to the ICD, Infrastructure Coordination Design Standards, to the Architectural Design Standards that was at the very end. So, if you could clarify what that entails or means, definition of it, please.
Yeah, sure. Good question. So, first, the residential neighborhood design. That would deal primarily with subdivisions, and so, how do you lay out your streets and lots in order to accommodate existing topography, to protect significant features such as mature trees or stream corridors or other natural features? But it would not get in as much to the specific design of individual buildings, so it's more at a neighborhood level. Infrastructure design, you know, some of that would be sort of subsurface infrastructure, so less of a sort of aesthetic design issue. But one of the topics is the design of residential streets, which touches on the issue of residential design as well, but I think is specifically more aimed at the public work standards, so providing some flexibility for how those are designed based on the type of project it is and the needs for transportation, connectivity, and other issues. And then, the last one is architectural design or urban design standards. That's more similar to the example I just showed you in Bainbridge Island. That gets really into any sort of aesthetic qualities that you would like. You can deal with specific design and architectural buildings, materials in a much more specific way than is typically addressed just to some extent.
So, currently in our, I think my understanding is that currently in our code, the last one, the architectural design standards are minimal, maybe apply mostly, we see them in the town center, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so, so as part of the objective then of the work that your company's going to be doing for the city with the help of the planning commission, this advisory board and the council, is to create code that would reflect the comp plan or the vision of our bedroom community here in Sammish? Is that a clear understanding on my part there?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. I did have one, I mean, I have several others, but the idea that, and I like what David Pyle, how he put this, the outcomes, the predictability of the outcome, I think is really important. So, as you're moving forward with the council or the planning commission or the advisory committee, as a council member, I think it would be really important to make sure that the outcomes, the predictability of those is something that matches our comprehensive plan, our current one. So, keep that, please keep that in mind as something that you're working towards as a goal or an objective. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We will make sure to do that.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Yes, thank you. Hey, two questions. One of them on the advisory board or on the applicants, were any applicants to the advisory board committee rejected?
So, I can weigh in on this, this is David Pyle. So, we assembled a list of people we knew to be interested in this topic, and we attempted to try to balance it as much as we could. So, to that effect, we did not technically open an application process where someone could submit an application to serve on a community advisory group. Instead, this is, this is a group that is put together based on existing contexts that we had, as we had done in the Phase One of the development regulations update. So, the answer would be no, no applicants were rejected. In balance, what we did was we assembled a group that were available and interested, and we looked to see that the statements of interest provided for a diversity of experiences and perspectives.
So, basically, no applicants were rejected because it was not an application process? It was an internal decision kind of process?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. My second question is on the slide that talked about having flexible standards versus prescriptive standards. I don't know if it's possible to go back to that slide or not. Here we go. So, my question on this is, having quite a bit of experience in the construction business and applying for permits myself and going through the process, when you have a prescriptive process on this rather than, or I should say flexible process rather than a prescriptive process, what is the control factors that are put in place? Is it a director's decision? Does it go to a committee? And then, is there also a robust public disclosure on any variance from what would have been the prescriptive standards?
Yeah, that's a very good question. In terms of the decision-making, I think, you know, there's lots of different ways to go about that from the director's decision, as you described, utilizing a hearing examiner or utilizing one of the city boards. I've had experience with all of those types of processes, and there are pros and cons to each. But at the end of the day, they're all legal decisions that should be well spelled out and well documented. I've worked with a number of cities that, including cities I've worked for directly, where there was not a history of really documenting your decision-making process or the reasons for issuing or denying a permit. or the reasons for issuing or denying a permit. And so therefore, you're not really building up a legal record. But if you think about, you know, a legal decision, right, oftentimes, it's got, you know, very detailed information that draws on case law and previous decisions to spell out the reasons why that decision was made. And in this case, it's a permit decision. And so that starts to build up a legal record. There's, of course, appeals processes that can happen, both internal to the city as well as to outside courts. But in cases where there is some measure of flexibility, it really is building up that legal record and precedent. So in some ways, maybe that flexibility dissipates over time, dissipates over time, as you start to build up a record and a consistency for how you apply those standards. And I know that that is sometimes difficult to sort of deal with, because, you know, we all want predictability. We all want it to be really straightforward. But when you're dealing with sort of the design of your community and community character, things that can't be spelt to just a number, I really do think there are some of these other more flexible approaches that will result in better outcomes. But it does take more training with staff and some empowerment to be able to get that right balance.
What would you, what would you say was the difference between a variance to a prescriptive standard versus a flexible standard?
Yeah. Good question. So a variance is a very specific legal term, that you can only get a variance if you are showing a hardship, right? There is some circumstance at your site, and there's usually very specific criteria, where you cannot easily or reasonably comply with the code in developing a project. So typically, in my experience, variances are decided by, you know, some sort of board or the hearing examiner. And again, that's very, very, should be very, very difficult to be able to achieve. Whereas I think a flexible standard is one that applies somewhat differently based on your site. So if you go back to the examples here, let's pick one, protect and repair natural systems. Again, if you're on a large, you know, 10-acre wooded site with a stream through it, then you have to have a great team of professionals on your, you know, development team to be able to put forth a proposal that can demonstrate that you comply with that. And as staff is reviewing that and providing a determination, and whoever the decision-maker is, they're going to look at other decisions. Oh, we have 10 other similar situations. Here's how we apply it, right? So it's not totally done in a vacuum. And I think that is a way that you can ensure that both the prescriptive standards are being met, but you're also utilizing these more flexible standards to get a better outcome. And that's, I think, the best I can explain it in terms of, in terms of how the difference is between those two situations.
Okay. So the quality of your flexible standard being successful, and as you said, to be applied correctly, is largely due, in your opinion, to the quality of the people that are interpreting and applying it, the quality of the staff?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, I have Commissioner Crandall.
Yes, thank you. Two quick things. The first one, the wheels of the bus go round and round, and it's back on the community design. And they talked about a bus being a forum, and we're not supposed to talk a lot on buses. So I think there should be a T in that word rather than an S. But maybe I'm wrong. So you can find that. And the other thing probably could be thing to mind when we talk about the protection of different environmental things, there must be some place and sometime we should look at the protection of artwork. We're putting a lot of effort, money, and dedication into the artwork within the city. Some of it's already there, some of it's in the future. And protection, not only from the environment itself, but just that it's sending a message, and maybe that message needs some kind of protection. Okay. That's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner and Chair Baughman.
Hey, Jeff, can you just comment on, do you think the bulk of the work that you're describing here that we're going to undertake will be more focused on, you know, developments, long plaid, short plaid, or more focused on applying to infill development, or people renovating their garage? Or how should we expect to see this work? You know, where's the focus and top, to what extent, kind of the various, the commission and the council and the advisory group influence that?
Yeah. I mean, I think we're going to comprehensively address all three of those topics. But if you think about sort of order of magnitude or scale of each of those, you know, the major subdivisions one, I think, is a big one, because it just deals with larger projects that have more of a widespread impact or wider scale impact. So I think that one is really important. I think the infill topic, we've heard a lot about, and I think is very important. It's a little bit different, because it's, you know, it's smaller sites and sometimes more isolated areas. So maybe not everyone is aware of the issue or is impacted by it. Whereas I think the issue of residential neighborhood design is, you know, maybe a little bit more of a universal topic that everyone's probably interested in. So I would say maybe it would tilt a little bit more towards major projects, but at the same time, I feel strongly that we're going to address all of those topics in a set of chapters. And... Thank you.
Okay. And then I had a comment that kind of goes along with Commissioner Crandall's with his comment on the art. And this goes with, and this is just the addition of adding on historical buildings as there's not a whole lot left in the city, but making sure that what is there is protected.
Sure. We could certainly do that. I've told those topics, public art and park preservation are ones that I have, myself and our firm have a lot of experience with. So that's certainly something we could incorporate into our work.
Okay. Do we see any more, anybody with any more questions? Okay. And, oh, councilmember?
Do you mind? Okay. Just the, I have a question, though, kind of on communication. How's, what's, how's that going to work? Are we doing email or phone call? I mean, how, what's the best way for us to do that? What's the preferred way for us to get our ideas, concerns, or questions to each other, even to the council, to the planning commission, them to us, to staff, to the consultant? Any help on that, please?
Well, I'll just offer some thoughts. I mean, working through Sarah probably would be a good place to start, and she's been great so far, coordinating all the different communication and making sure that we're kept up to speed on everything. So I don't know, Sarah, if you want to add to that, but I think you would be the right person to collect all that feedback and provide it to the right parties.
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, I think it would be great if all the communication comes through me, and then I can forward it to Jeff for additional consideration.
And this is David Pyle. I could add a little bit to that as well. So the purpose here, and the purpose of this meeting tonight and bringing this topic up is, we are, we're taking a really wide range of topics, and we're trying to distill those down into a work plan that we can look forward to working on, improving our code, better outcomes. And the idea here is that we're able to work through the wide range of issues, narrow them down by category, and then start to look at our code and look at where the gaps are in our code. And if you could provide any comments on the range of issues that have been identified so far in response to this meeting, then we'll go about making sure that those are brought to the surface with the next community advisory group meeting, that they can respond to those issues. One of the things we're trying to guard against in this process is the door remaining open for too long, where we just keep having more stuff added to the update. So we're trying to be really clear in our, in our scope of work and what we're doing so that we're able to really focus on finding the best solutions to the problems we've identified that are within the range of the scope. So we are asking that, that once we get through this meeting and after you've had some time to consider any things you might want us to add to the scope of work, that we really try to stay focused on just that body of work for the duration, knowing that there likely will be a Phase 3 to this on the horizon. One of the reasons why we were successful in Phase 1 is that we were able to contain the focus of the group and everyone working on this to the issues that we had identified, as opposed to adding more and changing focus and diluting the effort, if you will. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Yeah, to that end, I would just love to kind of throw out there, as we're working on this Phase 2, and there are a lot of other efforts going on around the county and around the region from an environmental standpoint, I would love to see us determine how we can be folding into these standards, how we can start measuring the impacts on the environment. And I know that King County just rolled out the K-4C toolkit is out there, and hopefully we'll be seeing some additional assistance there. So it would be great, because we know that from a greenhouse gas emission standpoint across King County, it tends to be a third from industry, a third from transportation and traffic, and a third from the built environment. Since we have no industry, I think the built environment is a pretty big player here, as well as obviously transportation. So it would be great, as we're looking at these, to figure out, right, how these will have a positive and/or negative impact on that. So is that something we can throw in there while we're looking at them?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm not seeing anybody else. Kartik, I'm thinking you may want to, he's having problems hearing anybody, you may want to go out and come back in and see if that helps you. And is there anybody?
Yes, I just...
Did that work?
Thank you.
Oh, great. Okay. Okay. Is there anybody else with any questions? Okay, not seeing anything. We're going to then move on.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Moran. The next item on the joint meeting agenda for tonight is the, an update on the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study, an overview of the process and where we stand. Understanding that there's still quite a bit of work to do on that, we just wanted to check in with the council and the commission and give an update on that process. With that, I'll turn it over to Miriam Leitner.
Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, perfect. So tonight, I'm going to be going over the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study. And the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study is what King County calls their Buildable Land Program, which is part of a 1997 amendment to the Washington State Growth Management So the Urban Growth Capacity Study is one component of a cyclical statewide and regional planning process aimed at accommodating growth in a coordinated and intentional way. As you can see, the cycle involves multiple components over many years. So tonight, we're just going to be focusing on where we are right now, which is entering into the final stages of the Urban Growth Capacity Study. As we work on the Urban Growth Capacity Study, King County is also starting to review the countywide planning policies to see if any changes are needed. At the same time, they're starting the process of updating the growth targets using the 2017 Office of Financial Management, or OSM, you see on screen, population projections, as well as the regional growth strategy from the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 Plan. Once developed, the growth targets get integrated into the draft countywide planning policies. And then after this, cities will begin evaluating their comprehensive plans to see if any changes are needed to ensure that they're prepared to meet their growth targets and better align themselves with the updated countywide planning policy. So when talking about the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study, there's a few things to remember. The first is that cities have to follow the process as directed by King County so that King County can better compare jurisdictions, so apples to apples, not apples to oranges, if you will. Secondly, the data provided to King County is designed to contribute to a high-level discussion around growth and isn't really intended to be a parcel-by-parcel study. Finally, the process directs cities to use the most reliable existing data possible not to create any new data. One final thing to note is that much of the Urban Growth Capacity Study data is generated from the King County Assessor's Office and attributes provided by the assessor. The King County started work on the Urban Growth Capacity Study in early 2019 and rolled out their data correction in three phases. Phases 1 through 3, which were non-discretionary and focused on data gathering and reporting, are now complete. And as we're moving into the discretionary phases of the project, which will require direction from city council, we thought this would be a good time to share an overview of the project to date. We know that there's a lot to cover at tonight's meeting, and as you can imagine, creating a short presentation to summarize a project that spanned almost a year and a half is challenging. So we've done our best to focus this presentation on giving you a high-level overview of the work completed during Phases 1 through 3. But we're not going to be sharing any numbers from these phases, as they're still in draft form and are being reviewed by King County as they wait for the market factor, which we'll be sending them later this fall. So that being said, for those that are interested in learning more, we're happy to provide more detailed information or further discussions. So please reach out to David and myself if that's something that you'd like after Steve's So in Phase 1, King County asked us to evaluate permit data and GIS data for new housing units added between 2012 and 2018. Data was pulled for individual housing categories such as subdivisions, single-family, multifamily, commercial, and others, and then rolled up by zone and utilized to calculate residential and non-residential achieved density. In Phase 2, the city was tasked with identifying areas that are vacant and redevelopable, as well as areas that are likely to be redeveloped over the next 20 years. King County provided the city with GIS data, as well as a spreadsheet of parcel-based assessor data from 2019. And then staff layered critical areas over the GIS data and either removed or reduced the capacity of land based on the type of critical area that was present. Next, using guidance from King County, staff excluded areas less likely to redevelop. This included things like parks, schools, golf courses, public facilities, utilities, and others. King County also required us to identify infrastructure gaps that may hinder development during the 20-year, 20-year period. So we reached out to the school districts, the water and sewer providers, and the city's public works department and asked them to identify areas that can't currently serve additional growth or where future growth could be constrained by the availability of adequate infrastructure. Finally, we created a definition for vacant, single-family redevelopable, multifamily redevelopable, and commercial mixed-use redevelopable, and then applied those to the remaining areas to identify our land capacity. Phase 3 used data provided in the previous phases to determine initial capacity. As part of Phase 3, the city was asked to identify discounts for right-of-way and public purpose areas like stormwater facilities, parks, and other open space. These discounts would be used to reduce the land supply previously identified during Phase 2. The city chose to utilize the same discounts that were used in the previous Sammamish Buildable Land Report, which was 18% for right-of-way and 16% for public purpose areas. After the discounts were chosen, we applied King County's formula for initial capacity. So we reduced the land supply that was identified in Phase 2 by applying the right-of-way and public purpose discounts, and this gave us the net buildable area. Then we multiplied the net buildable area by the assumed density, also from Phase 2, to get the initial capacity in housing units for residential and in square footage for commercial. After the discounts were chosen, we applied King County's formula for initial capacity. So we reduced the land supply that was identified in Phase 2 by applying the right-of-way and public purpose discounts, and this gave us the net buildable area. Then we multiplied the net buildable area by the assumed density, also from Phase 2, to get the initial capacity in housing units for residential and in square footage for commercial. So the next step for the Urban Growth Capacity Study, which we anticipate is going to be taking place later this fall, is identifying the market factor. And the market factor is a deduction to reflect how lands identified as vacant or redevelopable during Phase 2 may not actually be developed during the planning period based on the market. So in addition to the items that King County is going to be identifying for consideration, the city's going to want to consider items identified during the Phase 2 infrastructure gap work, which includes hindered capacity related to sewer provisions, road access, and school capacity. King County is in the process of finalizing their approach for market factor, and once we receive the guidance and the reporting complete, we'll be reaching back out to city council so that we can get direction on what Semamish's market factor or factors should be. So now we're going to shift topics to that of the 2023 to 2045 growth targets. While growth targets are a completely separate process from the Urban Growth Capacity Study, the two are interrelated in that the capacity findings from the Urban Growth Capacity Study are one of several pieces of data used by King County to determine the growth targets. Because the timelines for these are similar, we thought it might be helpful to provide some background information on what the growth target process will look like this year. So cities received two growth targets from King County, one for housing and one for jobs. But these targets actually start with the population projection from the Washington State Office of Financial Management, or OSM. For King County, these population projections are identified using the regional growth strategy from the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 Plan, which you see on screen. Semamish falls into the cities and towns category, and we're going to clarify what that means as it relates to the growth target. So on screen, you see the percentage of growth that each regional geography in King County will be taking. The majority of the growth, as you can see, is planned to go into the larger metro cities of Seattle and Bellevue, as well as to the core cities of Auburn, Boffel, Federal Way, Issaquah, Kent, Kirkland, Redmond, Renton, Sea-Tac, and Taquilla. The cities and towns category, which includes Semamish, will be allocated 5% of growth for population and 3% for jobs. King County will take the population projections for cities and towns and convert those to housing units and jobs. They then use a variety of factors, including the capacity findings from the Urban Growth Capacity Study, to allocate the projected housing and job numbers to the different cities. After this, regional caucuses are going to be held for each Vision 2050 regional geography category, and you see the cities and towns category on screen. I'm trying to listen to the council meeting, I can't do both. At these caucuses, the city's directors will come together to negotiate the growth targets for each city. One of the roles of staff and the planning director during this process is to continually work with city council, to keep them informed of the negotiations and get their direction on how to proceed. So we wanted to close the presentation tonight by talking about next steps for both growth targets and the Urban Growth Capacity Study. What you see on screen is a tentative timeline based on dates provided to us by King County, and as you can see, the two timelines are almost identical. The red stars on here indicate where staff will need directions from city council, or where there are opportunities for council members and the public to provide comments. Regional target negotiation, or sorry, growth target negotiations are anticipated to start around the end of October with the beginning of the regional caucuses. And once we have clarity on the schedule from King County, staff will be setting up meetings with city council so that we can get direction and keep you guys updated. After targets have been negotiated, King County will integrate them into the draft countywide planning policies, or CPPs, and council members will be able to provide comment on those during the first quarter of 2021, before they get finalized in the second quarter. In terms of the Urban Growth Capacity Study, King County is in the process of finalizing the approach for market factor and anticipates rolling that out to cities later this fall. As soon as staff receive these materials, we'll be setting up meetings with city council to get direction. And the market factor is the last portion of what the city needs to provide to King County for the Urban Growth Capacity Study. Once they have the materials from all of the cities, they're going to start compiling their report, which they anticipate having a draft out for public review in the first quarter of 2021, before it gets reviewed by the Growth Management Planning Council and finalized in June of 2021. So please be on the lookout for some follow-ups from us once we receive notice from King County on the market factor and the dates for the regional caucuses. As I said, we know this is a lot of information to understand and digest, and as I mentioned earlier, David and I are happy to provide more details and discussion as desired, so please feel free to reach out to us. Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you. Okay, well, it looks like we have some questions. Let's start with Councilmember Gamblin, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Yes, hey, thank you for that. If we could go one slide back to the 2023-2045 growth targets?
Yeah.
Okay, so we had mentioned that as a city and town, we were looking at a 5% growth target. So these, all these cities listed are in the cities and towns category, along with Semamish. Are every, is everybody mandated to take the identical 5% of growth? So is each one of these cities mandated to take 5%?
No, it's the, the group as a whole. So all of these cities combined will be taking 5%. How the 5% gets divided up between the cities is what gets negotiated.
Okay, and can you speak to negotiated? What is negotiated? Who negotiates it? How is it negotiated? Is it a formal process? Is it an informal process?
So that is a very good question. I have not been part of that before, but I'm looking at David, even though he can't see me, to see if he might have more details.
Yeah, thank you, Miriam. David Pyle here. So this is a process that is, what it is, and we've, we've asked King County several times how this process will work, and ultimately what happens is a growth target ends up being adopted as part of the countywide planning policy updates. And that is the end goal. So what, what happens is, once the draft report is issued, and if, Miriam, if you could go forward one slide, I think, or maybe it was backwards, this is the slide with the red stars on it. Yep, that one. One of the challenges that we'll have is the fact that these two different processes will be running concurrently for a period of time, and we will be needing to take information from one process to use in our, our work in, in identifying a growth target for Semamish with our counterpart jurisdictions that are part of the caucus. So what happens is, is the, the planning directors for the different caucuses, as I understand, or for the different cities that are in the caucus, as I understand it, meet, and that's where the conversation starts. There are different factors that are considered, and in Semamish, we will be considering our rate of growth, we will be considering our connectedness to external infrastructure, such as freeways or major transit corridors. And ultimately, what happens is that the group is required to determine how the growth will be allocated amongst the cities within the caucus. So for example, based on preliminary information that I have, so these numbers are, are what was given to us by King County, if, if the region, the King County area is expected to receive 700,000 people over this planning horizon, and we are required, as a caucus, to take 5%, that means the caucus would be looking at dividing up 35,000 people, dependent on the, the number that they use for the per-household census, would then indicate to us how many units that we're looking at in terms of the caucus. So if they were to use 2.5 as a number, you would then divide out 35,000 by 2.5, and that would indicate how many units the caucus would be required to account for. Then what happens is the caucus would discuss how best to allocate growth. There, there very well may be some jurisdictions within the caucus that, that want growth, that have positioned themselves and they're, they're ready, they're primed to receive growth. There are other jurisdictions in, in the caucus that, that may have some challenges around being able to accommodate growth beyond a certain amount. So I think that will all be brought to the table. It is, it is kind of like a large negotiation process, as we understand it. So we will be looking for more details on that from King County as we get closer to that process, and we will be updating the council and the commission on, on that process so they can be aware of how they can be involved. I have been told that there are opportunities for elected officials to, to reach out to other elected officials within the caucus. It is a bit of a political process, and ultimately, it results, as I said, in the adoption of a countywide planning policy that the, the city can then respond to following that adoption.
Okay, thank you, David. Two quick asks. Number one, when was the last time this was done? And number two, would it be possible to get a, some kind of spreadsheet or information on that last time that these were assigned, these growth percentages were assigned? That, can we get the breakup from the 19 cities within this caucus of how it occurred last time, what percentage of the growth each of these different cities took, so that we have something to start with?
Yeah, that, that's it found, and I believe it's the, Miriam, you can correct me on the date. The 2012 countywide planning policies is, I think, the date. I'd have to look, go back to my reference, which I have bookmarked on my computer. And within that countywide planning policy, that was the, the benchmark by which all of the cities then embarked on updating their comprehensive plans. So we would look back to that, that point in the process. One thing to keep note of is that the Urban Growth Capacity Study is, is very different than the, the prior generation of it, which was the Buildable Lands Analysis. The guidance is different, the process is different, and the, the county has put a lot of effort into trying to consider other factors, and I believe it to be a, a far more comprehensive process than what was done previously. And that, that also leads me to believe, and now we haven't received guidance on how exactly the caucuses will meet and negotiate an outcome, but I believe that to be a bit different than what has happened in the past as well, because the geographies are different. So based on Vision 2050, if Miriam can go back to the slide that shows the caucuses and the different, the different geographies that are shown, we are, we are put in a, a different category than, than, we, we have been placed in a category with cities that don't typically have direct access to high-capacity transit. An example, Miriam, can you go to the map that shows the different caucuses? An example of a city that has been put in a different category is Mercer Island. Mercer Island is now in a high-capacity transit community because they are recipient of light rail. So that, that changed the dynamic. And if you read through the draft of Vision 2050, which is due for consideration by the General Assembly in the end of October, there, there is a really good description around the category of cities and towns, and why it is distinct and different than metropolitan cities, core cities, high-capacity transit communities, et cetera. And there is a description around some of the scenarios that they considered as part of the EIS that was done on Vision 2050. And the preferred alternative is one that looks at a, a lower rate of growth and expectation for growth in cities and towns than the other, the other metropolitan cities, core cities, and high-capacity transit communities. There were other scenarios in the EIS where they looked at trying to reset urban growth and trying to balance it out a little more by adding additional growth to cities and towns. So it is an interesting read, and if you have time and, and the, the wherewithal to dig through the document, the EIS for Vision 2050 is, is actually very informative with regard to this whole setup and how it works.
Okay, thank you, David. Appreciate the input.
David, this is, and Kenneth Kelly, I just wanted to add really quick for comparison. The, in 2014, we were getting ready to start working on our comprehensive plan under Vision 2040, the previous version. The city of Semamish was under the large cities category, and our counterparts included Des Moines, Issaquah, Henmore, Maple Valley, Mercer Island, Shoreline, and Woodinville. In 2050, we are now under, back with our way of explaining it, lower category with cities and towns, so again, our counterparts are Dubal, Carnation, St. Pauli, and so forth. So just to give some comparison, and those allocations can be found in the 2014 Buildable Lands Report, and I'd be more than happy to send that link out following this conversation. So this is some additional background information.
You got it, thank you. And if you could supply that link, I'd appreciate it. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's see. I'm seeing everybody in the queue here is somebody from the council.
I think I'm next.
Yeah, I wanted to see if there's anybody from our planning commission that had any questions. All right, well, then I'm going to continue on here, I guess. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So somewhat similar to what Councilmember Gamblin just went, is that I think the council participation in this is, is critical. In 2012, when this was done, I think the narrative that, you know, council and the public was given was that we always went for the low target number, and I'm not quite sure that's true, because I've seen a slide that said we actually took the highest target number. So I think our involvement in this process about where we land on our target is critical. And as a council, I think it behooves us to have a discussion about what council member or members will sit and represent our position, and therefore, we would have to come up with a position in order to inform that member or members of the council that would go and speak on our behalf at any of these, you know, caucus meetings to figure out how the pie gets divvied up. So I would ask that the city manager work with David Pyle in figuring out the timeline as to when council needs to have that discussion, so that we are prepared in advance to have a council member present that is carrying the message of the council at those meetings.
Okay, I believe that is already happening, but could you confirm that for us?
Yeah, we, we are tracking this process fairly closely. You know, one, one of the points that we want to make is, is to involve the council and keep the council and the community updated on the process, and that's why we're here tonight. And we also want to make sure that you're aware of where there are points of, of, you know, the opportunities to engage. The, the process thus far has largely, it is King County's process. We have been following King County guidance. They give us a data, a data request, a form, we fill it out, we send it back, and we're following the prescribed guidance. We are, we're, we're shifting gears here, if you will, into a, a portion of the process that is more discretionary, where we have the opportunity to engage with our counterparts. And that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight, is to let you know we have this on the horizon, we're going to be shifting gears. We have not yet, but we are going to be shifting gears. The first step will be the, the market factor, which is where we look at an adjustment of land capacity based on a market factor, and we have some discretion there. There'll be guidance provided by the county on that. We don't have that yet. Then the step following that will be the, the caucuses and the, the regional negotiations around allocation of growth. That'll be followed ultimately. The end goal here is the adoption of a countywide planning policy that includes all of the growth targets, like what was done in 2012.
Great. Okay, Councilmember?
So I guess, oh, hold.
Okay, go ahead.
Again, please, thank you. I guess my question is then, when is our council due to discuss kind of our position relative to growth targets, and how and when will we be designating someone that will sit there and, and therefore verbalize our position?
It's a great question. You know, we'll, we'll work with the city manager to have that added to the, the agenda here, your, your, your council agenda, and have opportunity to talk about that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ross, if you'll forgive me for just a minute, I'm going to put Councilmember Stewart on, since she's got some information from the Growth Management Policy Committee, is that correct? Councilmember Ross, or Stewart?
Yeah, and thank you. Yeah, I will provide a, a link that can also go in the minutes for everyone to be able to see. The, King County put together a presentation to walk through the entire process of how this works, and David did a, a pretty good job, but I think it's helpful to have the visuals along with it to. it to see exactly what the steps are. And I think the key for us to understand is that the Vision 2050 is very different than the previous visions that were driving this. The focuses in Vision 2050 are very much around the environment, reducing the trips, the time that people spend in their cars, that type of thing, looking at a little bit more of a balance from a social and environmental justice perspective, right? An equity perspective, because in the past, there's been a lot of negotiation that's happened and quite frankly, things have kind of been dumped in certain places that maybe didn't have the same kind of ability to provide what they needed to provide. So I think when you look at the process, you'll, like, the entire council will be very pleased to see that that very low number, that 3% to 5% of the overall growth targets for King County will go across all of these cities and towns. And they're going to be looking at those factors very closely. So I will provide that link. It can go out in the minutes so that everyone can see it. Again, it was a great presentation and I think they may have recorded delivering it. I'll see if I can find the recording as well. And I think I can dig up some of the information, although I think Kelly, you said you had it, from the meeting minutes from the GMTC when this was decided back in 2011, 2012. And I'll provide that as well so that everyone can see kind of how that went. Because ultimately, there are negotiations that can happen across jurisdictions, but ultimately, this will get decided through these King County bodies because it is ultimately going to be something that the King County Council will ultimately approve. So I just wanted to help provide that clarity to hopefully answer everyone's questions on the process.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Ross?
Well, going after everybody, most of my questions are answered, so that's good. I'll just touch on a few points. Kelly, just, I think that you covered it, but I just want to confirm. Are you saying being classified cities and towns and our participation in that 3% to 5% is lower than our previous classification when we went through this exercise?
Let me get my mic and camera turned on. Yes, it's a, you know, Councilmember Stewart described that accurately. You know, the 2014 Buildable Lands Report was based on the 2040 vision and that has kind of had a higher category. The 2050 has had a lower category because of, you know, our location, infrastructure, and so forth. So I think, yeah, I'll echo Councilmember Stewart's comments. I think the city council will be happy with how we were categorized in the 2040, our 2050 vision, yes, our key vision.
Thanks, Kelly. Also, I think it'd be critical when we go through the market factor exercise. And I'm assuming that cities that want more growth are not going to have a hard time grabbing more growth unless everybody wants more growth. So that's, conversely, if some cities, based on their infrastructure, et cetera, want less growth or less of the number, or less of the piece of the 3% to 5% pie, that their, the judgment will be based on the existing processes and laws in place, right? Not what, so our, for example, one of our processes may have extra capacity, but maybe in future, laws may not have the same answer for an infrastructure standpoint. Is that fair to say? That we're basically going to go through the exercise based on the current processes and laws in place and zoning and land use? Kelly or David, either one?
I would say that that is correct, that the process as we see it today is based on the current rules on the ground with regard to zoning, current critical areas rules, for example. However, one of the things that is included in the process is infrastructure deficiencies and market factor. And those come to bear in adjusting the amount of available land based on other factors, right? So they are considered. So if we know that we have an infrastructure deficiency in certain categories, and the easiest one to call out is sewer capacity, sewer connections. And we did work very closely with all of the service providers, you know, whether it was the Water and Sewer District, whether it was the school districts, whether it was the Public Works Department, to understand from their perspectives as service providers where the limitations are in our systems. And in some cases, you are able to identify that property is not available for development because there is really no reasonable way to sewer the property and that property really is just not available. And that is an infrastructure gap. There are other areas where there are infrastructure deficiencies which will play in, and there'll be more information on this as we move into the next phase, which is the market factor. But infrastructure deficiencies will be considered in the market factor. And that is where, I consider it kind of like a resistance factor. If you had, say, 10,000 acres and, and that's just a random number, you know, no bearing at all in the city, so I want to make sure that's clear. I'm just using a nice round number. If you had 10,000 acres and you took out, and you said that, you know, we anticipate that not all of that land will be available because there are significant areas within that land that is limited in its ability to get some type of infrastructure service. And we feel that the cost of building that infrastructure will cause it to not be marketable in this planning horizon. Therefore, you can assign a factor of, say, 0.75. And there'll be guidance from the county coming out on this. This is a very coarse example. So then you would end up with 7,500 acres of land available. So it's, there is guidance that will be pushed out by King County on this. As we've said, we're waiting for that to be finalized. Once we get it, we'll definitely provide an update to the council and the commission on it. And then we'll be coming back to you because that is a discretionary item and we'll be wanting to work closely with you to identify what that market factor should be for our city based on what we know to be true here in the city.
Great. Thanks, Dave.
Commission Chairperson Baughman.
So this is actually, I have two questions about the urban growth capacity study. And actually, it was kind of, it kind of gets at what David was just describing, so maybe he's answered it. But I'm curious about the buildable area calculation and are areas that we would consider unbuildable for other reasons? Is that part of the market factor or is that in the calculation? And when I say that, I'm referring to sloped areas or reasons that per topography are not reasonably buildable or critical areas around wetland or something like that. Are those calculated out of the calculation for buildable area or is that a discretionary item that we have to advocate for?
So those areas have been removed during Phase 2. So we layered over the data provided to us by King County. We layered over a variety of critical areas which included steep slopes. And those were excluded or reduced based on the type of critical area that was present. So critical areas were removed. I would say anything else is likely something that we would want to consider during market factor. But David, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's a very good description. Thank you.
If I may, my other question is about capacity. What's the starting point for that calculation? In other words, if we have, and I don't know what we have right now, but if we have developments that have already submitted a permit and so some land is already encumbered by a permit and that could be considered capacity that's already been consumed? Or is the starting point just what's built today or some specific date? What is the capacity starting point?
So it's a good question. And I think one of the challenges with this exercise is even though we started in early 2019, here we are getting towards the end of 2020. So it's constantly, you know, a moving target. And King County was very careful to say this is a snapshot in time. So we were looking in terms of construction that was built was between 2012 and 2018. When we moved into Phase 2 and started looking at land capacity, we were using data provided by the King County Assessors Office from 2019. We did go through that data and exclude any parcels that we could identify that were projects that were currently underway. We also provided a list of subdivisions that were currently under review to King County to try to capture some of that gap in time. Does that help clarify?
Sure. Yeah, I think I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have got Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, again, just want to provide people with a little bit of insight. So to Councilmember Ross's question, yes and no to if a jurisdiction wants more growth, they'll just be given more growth. And the reason I say that is because, again, the goal of this is to make sure that all of this aligns with the countywide planning policies, which align to the Vision 2050 goals. And there are some goals in there around things like the environment, things like traffic reduction, greenhouse gas reduction. And again, going back to the equity issues, one of the issues that is trying to be addressed is that some of the past growth, well, much of the past growth has ended up being in areas that can't afford, some of the least wealthy areas in King County that can least afford some of the infrastructure challenges that need to be provided. So yes, if a jurisdiction wants more growth, that will certainly be taken into consideration, but they won't necessarily be given it if they can't show that they could comply with the appropriate goals around, you know, housing equity and things like that. And on the flip side, a jurisdiction that wants less, that would certainly be taken into consideration and be part of it. But again, from an equity issue, making sure that those equity issues are addressed as well. So again, I will provide the links to the information because I think it's really important for folks to take a look at the Vision 2050 and a lot of what those goals are. And you'll be able to see from the GMTC links that I provided in reports before, but this one from the presentation will be helpful. So people can see that it is a negotiation, but there's a big attempt from King County to really try to be fair around how these things are applied and to make sure that they align with a lot of the other goals and efforts that are going on across the county and across the region, not just jurisdictional specific. So I think it's a balancing act of what do jurisdictions want versus what do we need every jurisdiction to do in order to maintain the same. Because again, you know, protecting the environment, it doesn't stop at the end of our Sammamish border. It doesn't stop at Redmond's border. We all have to work together to make sure that we're doing a good job of protecting the environment. So I hope that helps and provides some additional clarity.
Commissioner Josh Amato.
Thank you. Is there a location that we and the public can easily see the information submitted by Sammamish to King County for Phases 1 through 3? That's my other question.
It's a good question. So right now, all of the data submitted is still in draft form and being reviewed by King County. So I think we're keeping it internal and know that when the report comes out, the draft report from King County, it will include all of that data so that the public can see it.
Okay. Do we have any more questions? Okay, I'm going to ask, Dave, I'm going to ask you to do a wrap-up then?
Yeah, going back to the broader agenda for the evening, we want to thank the commission and the council for meeting. We're looking for ways to enhance communication between staff, the council, the commission, much like what Councilmember Trine was asking, how do we give feedback? You know, what is the best way to give feedback? And staff are definitely a good channel for communication between the different bodies. And what we're really trying to achieve here is to help the Planning Commission be successful in serving as an advisory board to the council, to help make our processes a little more efficient so we have time to take on more. The idea here is that if we're able to cut back on some screen time with the council in favor of allowing the commission to vet some of these issues, that that provides the council more time to talk about other business. So that's really the purpose of tonight's meeting, is so that we're able to talk about the topics together and hear comments together so that we're all aware and we can frame these items in our mind as we start to work on them in our work plan. So thank you very much for taking the time to come to join us tonight.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask that Commissioner Chair Baughman. I know you looked very excited to be taking on any extra work, like you mentioned, so I'm going to let you have a few comments here.
Well, I think that council has lots of other things to do than listen to me, so I'll just say that the commission is excited to be able to participate and help support the council in representing the citizens of Sammamish. And I think it's always good that we have a little bit of good communication to understand perspectives and where we're coming from and what it is that we should be focused on, what the priorities are. And so I would always just encourage any kind of feedback or communication between us in the appropriate way. And let's keep the ability to talk about these things open and foremost so that we can be productive in our efforts. But we appreciate the opportunity to get together together and look forward to accomplishing a lot. Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank the commission for being here tonight and I would hope that maybe we could do these twice a year instead of once a year. And so I want to, if you guys, if the channels are open, you have any questions, please just make sure that they know so that we can get together and do it this way because it worked out really well. So thank you, everybody, for taking the time to be here and especially early. So, okay. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order to throw in and any other comments or questions? Oh, you guys are so easy. Okay, it's only 10 after 7:00. So, all right, everybody, have a great evening.
So Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for.
Yeah, okay. Dave has another comment here, so nobody leave yet.
Just want to check in regarding the intermission that we'll have and then when the meeting would restart. I believe the meeting was scheduled to start at 8:00.
Yes, so councilmembers, meeting is to start at 8:00. So you get a little break. All right. Commissioners, have a great evening. Councilmembers, take a break, eat your dinner, be back. Okay. Bye. Okay, council, we are back to our meeting. Welcome back from intermission. And we will continue our meeting of Tuesday, October 6, 2020. And the first thing up that we have this evening is our emergency management. And we have got our emergency manager here.
Yes, good evening, mayor, council, city manager. My name is Andrew Stevens. I'm with Eastside Fire and Rescue and the emergency manager for Sammamish. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to provide an update on the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Across the nation, we are again seeing spikes in coronavirus case numbers. And roughly one-half of all U.S. states are seeing increasing positive cases, including the state of Washington. Overall, the United States now has more than 7.4 million confirmed cases of COVID-19 since the pandemic began and has claimed more than 210,000 lives. That number places COVID-19 as the third-leading cause of death in the United States for 2020, trailing only behind heart disease and cancer. Another point to highlight is that in the last week, a report published by the American Academy of Pediatrics and Children's Health Association showed that the number of children infected with the virus nationally rose dramatically, in more than 14% in the last two weeks alone, a surge that coincided with many schools reopening. After nearly two months of decline, King County has now seen nearly three straight weeks of increases in positive cases. As schools across the region reopened and colder weather is driving more people inside, As schools across the region reopened and colder weather is driving more people inside, the county is experiencing more and more localized outbreaks. And locally, the city of Samamish has seen 26 new positive cases in the last two weeks alone. The point of all this is that COVID-19 is still very much a present and ongoing threat. Since there has not been any recent significant changes to the recommended COVID-19 mitigations in either the county or the state, then these increases are most likely tied to individual choices. As more and more people lower their guard against the virus, resume gathering in groups outside of their households, do not maintain social distancing with others, or fail to wear proper face coverings, these outbreaks will continue. So, I urge all residents to continue to stay the course and do everything in their power to eliminate their personal risk. This may be especially hard as the holidays approach, but it is critical that we continue to slow the spread of this virus. Since many traditional holiday activities, such as trick-or-treating, are considered high-risk, I recommend everyone consider safer, alternative ways to celebrate. The city of Samamish, for example, is hosting a virtual costume and pumpkin decorating contest. And the CDC recently posted guidance on holiday celebrations, full of recommendations and ideas for alternative, low-risk activities. Now, since the onset of this crisis, Samamish has taken a proactive approach to reducing and mitigating COVID-19 hazards. Months ago, a phased approach regarding the reopening of city programs and facilities was brought before this Council. And while some jurisdictions in the region have decided to reduce their own restrictions, staff in Samamish believe that this is premature and will only lead to unnecessary risk and additional exposures. This is why we recommend the continued closure of public playgrounds, docks, beaches, and a skate park until the county is in Phase Three. While this is certainly a policy decision that the Council could reverse, our recommendation would be to not loosen any current restrictions at the same time we are seeing nearly three straight weeks of increased COVID-19 cases. Lastly, following many disasters, those impacted usually see early support and assistance, but that quickly fades away. The response phase of most crises ends in the first 72 hours and then transitions into short and long-term recovery, the latter of which can last for months or even years. The difference between COVID-19 and other disasters is that we're seven months into this crisis and we are still in the response phase. For months, talks of continued federal COVID-19 assistance have failed, and just today, they were ordered to be placed on hold until after the election. Provided that this pandemic will continue and may even worsen until significant advancements and medical interventions are developed, communities need to consider how they will continue their own response and recovery efforts for many more months to come. Thank you.
Okay, Council, does anybody have any questions for Andrew? Okay, I am not seeing any. Good report. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and the citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comments. Up to three minutes of verbal comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 p.m. the day of the meeting. Phone number 1-571-317-3122, and the access code is 929-348-197. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. If you would like to provide public comment on the public hearing, please say so when you are unmuted. You will be placed back on mute, and you will have the opportunity to speak at the public hearing. Do we have anybody on hold for public comment?
Madam Mayor, I do not see anybody on the line for public comment this evening.
Okay, then we will move forward with our consent calendar. I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay, I think that was Christie.
Okay.
Okay, do I have discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion and seeing no discussion. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the consent calendar, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Next, we're gonna move forward with the proclamations that we have. We have two. One is for domestic violence, which will be read by Councilmember Ross. The second one is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I, Christie, I don't know if you saw that, but I was hoping Deputy Mayor would read that.
I would love to. Thank you.
Okay, then we will have those read accordingly. We will start with the domestic violence, read by Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. In the city of Samamish, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, we urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Lifewire and other community organizations to work toward the elimination of intimate partner violence. Whereas, in just one day across the U.S. and its territories, nearly 75,000 victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than 9,000 requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation, could not be provided because programs lacked the resources to meet victims' needs. Whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas, racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism, and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality, or other factors help to perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims. Whereas, the need for safe house continues to be rated as survivors' most urgent need. And whereas, Samamish joins with others across Washington and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Samamish. Whereas, domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems. Each is number-one thing adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Now, therefore, Karen Moran, Mayor of City of Samamish, on behalf of the City Council, hereby do proclaim October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, Councilmember Ross. The next we have is Breast Cancer Awareness Month is October, and that will be read by our Deputy Mayor.
Great, thank you. So, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2020. Whereas, a woman receives a diagnosis of breast cancer every two minutes, making this disease the most frequently diagnosed cancer among women in the U.S. other than skin cancers. Whereas, about 39,520 women and 450 men are expected to die from breast cancer in 2011. Whereas, through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including an increase in five-year relative survival rates for localized breast cancer from 74% to 98%. Whereas, the 2.5 million breast cancer survivors living in the U.S. today are a testament to courage, as well as to the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. Whereas, screening rates are declining, and a recent study reveals that among the 1.5 million women studied over the age of 40 with a health insurance, less than 50% receive the recommended annual screening. Whereas, various organizations are spreading breast cancer awareness to both men and women through outreach, education, and screening programs, and have empowered women with life-saving message of early detection and the importance of having annual mammograms. And the county would like to support and encourage these ongoing efforts on behalf of our citizens. Whereas, throughout the month of October, women are encouraged to make a renewed commitment to following recommended screening guidelines and to make a mammogram appointment. Whereas, throughout the month of October, organizations and healthcare practitioners in this county are encouraged to use the opportunity to promote awareness about breast cancer and proper breast health and to encourage annual mammograms. Whereas, public officials and the citizens of this county are urged to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs that encourage annual mammograms. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Karen Moran, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do by proclaim October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Samamish.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I know we do not do three proclamations, but I did want to make sure that we did acknowledge that Affordable Housing Week, and I wanted to just do a couple of the points that were on, that were listed for us. The most recent point in time found that 11,751 people in our community sleeping outdoors without shelter in January of this year, and families are considered housing insecure because they were spending more than half of their income on rent and utilities. Governor Inslee extended a residential eviction moratorium through October 15, 2020, to prevent families and individuals from losing their housing due to non-payment. And the need for affordable homes across King County prior to COVID-19 pandemic and the number of people experiencing homelessness has remained at crisis levels. So, I wanted to make sure that we keep in mind that the week of October 12 is Affordable Housing Week. Okay, so the next thing we have is the public hearing. The public hearing is to be authorizing the City Manager and the Director of the Community Development to grant exceptions for the duration and frequency requirements set forth on the Samamish Municipal Code 21A70.1952 for temporary encampments, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date. And who's going to speak to that? Would that be, oh, there we go, it's going to be Mr. Sugg.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and Mr. City Manager. Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst, joined by David Pyle, Director of Community Development. At the Council's meeting on September 15, the Council opened a public hearing on an emergency ordinance that would exempt Tent City 4 from the city's homeless encampment time limitations. That public hearing was continued to tonight in order to allow more opportunity for public comment. The emergency ordinance is included in your packet tonight as Exhibit One and would accomplish three main things. The first is exempt Tent City and Faith United Methodist Church from the homeless encampment time limitations in the city's code. The second is that it would extend Tent City's current permit at Mary Quinn &amp; Peace for the minimum time needed to process a permit for the Faith Church site. And three, specify that Tent City must vacate Samamish when Faith Church is no longer able to host, but by no later than March 31 of 2021. So, Faith Church held their required neighborhood meeting last week on October 1. There were apparently about four attendees to the virtual event, and questions were asked about topics such as COVID safety precautions, noise control duration, and how often the church staff will monitor the encampment. One of our planners was in attendance to monitor the meeting and mentioned several times that the Council would be holding a hearing tonight, and that public comment was very welcome. The onsite manager of Tent City was also in attendance and stated that he is already in talks with other churches on the east side for a new location to which Tent City can migrate to this winter. So, tonight, staff recommend that the Council close the public hearing and consider adopting the emergency ordinance included as Exhibit One in your packet this evening. And with that introduction, I'll go back and turn it over to the Mayor.
Okay, so, Council, I'm looking for if there is any, I'm looking in the chat box, so I have a good, I have some cues here. Okay, so first, we're gonna start with, I think we're gonna do a roundtable, but we will start with Councilmember Stewart.
Well, I was just gonna go ahead and kick us off and move that we adopt the ordinance as written. Let's do that one.
Okay, well, first, we would have to close the public hearing, but I'm gonna finish a round robin first.
I'll do the public part, because I think.
Yep. Yeah, we would have to close the hearing first. So, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna finish, sorry, my mic just went off. I'm gonna do a round robin first, and then we have to close out the public hearing.
All right, well, then I'll say clearly that I support that we go ahead and extend this, as we just heard from the emergency manager, and as we know from what's going on nationally, that we are still in the midst of a crisis, and there are folks that need a home, and we can provide them that. So, that is literally the least that we can do right now.
Okay, and then we're going to move on to following, I'm just gonna follow the thing, follow my list, going to Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Pam Stewart and think we should move forward with this.
Deputy Mayor? Oh, I think you're.
I think we just need to get to the, if there's any public comment, then vote. I think we all know where we're gonna land.
We don't have any public comment on the phone.
Can you not hear me?
Nope. We don't have any public comment, do we?
Yeah, I don't, round robin, I think we all know where this is.
I didn't hear.
Yeah. I think we should.
Okay, well, we're halfway through. So, Councilmember Gamlin, do you have any comment? Just say pass if you don't.
No, I support it.
Okay, Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you.
Pass.
Councilmember Ross?
Echo the lead-off with Councilmember Stewart.
All right, so, that all being said, then I think we can close the public hearing. And now, we can go back to looking for a motion.
So moved. So, I move that we adopt the ordinance, the emergency ordinance, as written in Exhibit One.
Second.
All right, we have a, and is there any discussion? Hearing none. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passes 7-0. Okay, then moving on to new business. CARES Act, so, who's, oh, Mr. Sugg.
Good evening, once again, Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst. I have a handful of quick slides to introduce this item tonight, and these slides will generally follow the format of the Agenda Bill in your packet, and then we can open it up to any questions and discussion. So, we'll start with some background here. As we all know, the CARES Act was a massive $2 trillion economic stimulus bill passed in March of this year in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our state received an allocation of CARES funding, and a portion of that, they then passed to jurisdictions under 500,000 population who did not receive a direct distribution from the federal government. In total, the city is eligible to receive about $2.9 million of this pass-through funding from the state. And an important distinction here, the city does not receive this funding upfront, but it must instead spend its own money on eligible costs between March 1 and November 30, and then submit those costs to the state by December 15 to receive reimbursement. So, after reviewing the options for using this $2.9 million allocation, the City Manager is recommending that the city seek reimbursement for $2.9 million in budgeted COVID-related eastside fire and rescue expenses. This, in turn, would create an equivalent amount of savings in the city's budget on the E4 contract, which would be earmarked specifically for continuing to provide COVID-19 support to the community. There are a few benefits to this, as outlined in the Agenda Bill. The primary benefit of this recommendation is that it allows the city to.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, but we're not seeing the slides.
Oh, I apologize. I need to share it to the go-to meeting as well. I apologize, I need to share it to the go-to meeting as well. Just give me one second, please.
Sorry to interrupt you there, but it sounded like you had stuff you were reading.
I am. You should be able to see it any second now. Let me know when you can.
There we go, thank you.
Perfect. All righty, so we're here on the benefit slide of the recommendation I just mentioned. The primary benefit is that it allows the city to continue providing financial assistance to the community beyond November 30. And you may have seen, as our emergency manager, Andrew Stevens, mentioned, the news today that negotiations on a new fiscal stimulus package have apparently ceased until after the election. So this CARES Act allocation that we've received may be the last federal funding that we do receive for quite a while. And having this money available ensures that the city is able to support the community through future waves of COVID this winter and into next year. There are some, a couple of other benefits there listed at the bottom of the slide. One of them is that it eliminates the burdensome requirements that come attached to federal funds, such as sub-recipient grant requirements, which can end up slowing the provision of funding and add burden not only to the city, but also to our grantees. This recommendation may also reduce the city's potential exposure during the required single audit. There is potentially less room for error in submitting one EFOR expense than in submitting for hundreds of expenses for various grants, PPP or PPE, and other costs that the city has incurred. Looking at the eligibility of this recommendation that the city manager is making, a couple weeks ago, staff, legal, and EFOR held a call with Tony Hanson, who's the individual at the Department of Commerce responsible for overseeing the coronavirus relief funds in order, and we had this conversation in order to seek some clarification on questions we were hearing from both the council and the community. And what we found out was Tony was very clear, the use of budgeted EFOR expenses would be an allowable use of CARES funding. And he even went so far as to suggest it would be a smart way to use the funding, given the time limitations under CARES. There's further detail and links to the relative guidance or relevant guidance in your agenda bill this evening, but essentially, the recent clarifications from the Treasury Office of Inspector General is that public safety employee costs are presumed to be Looking at the current expenditures to date on the COVID-19, the city has spent over 1.9, or excuse me, over $1 million out of the general fund for COVID response and recovery activities. This includes grants to nonprofits, grants to businesses, and expenditures needed to support city operations. And the next item on tonight's agenda will consider adding to this total through a second round of grants to businesses and nonprofits. So in conclusion, the State Department of Commerce has confirmed that budgeted public safety expenses are an allowable use of the city's CARES Act allocation. The resulting budget savings on the EFOR contract would be earmarked specifically for COVID-related expenses, should the city council approve of the manager's recommendation. And this funding will be tracked and reported on periodically to the council and the public. We also want to mention that our communications team will be setting up a page on Connect Samamish, where residents can submit their questions on this CARES Act funding or any other COVID topic, and the city's responses will be posted to that same page. So that's all we have for the introduction on this topic. The city manager, emergency manager, fire chief, and I are in attendance tonight and available to help answer any questions. And with that, I will turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, we've got questions in the chat box. So we are going to start out with Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, hey, thank you, Mr. Sugg. That was a good presentation, appreciate the information. I just have one quick question that I'm looking at here, I jotted down before, is, so is east side fire and rescue already shows up as a budgeted item? Don't we have to demonstrate that it was used for substantially different purposes?
Yes, so that is one of the requirements of the Treasury's guidance. So there, so one of the requirements is that the city cannot submit for reimbursement for expenses that are in the most recently approved budget. But the caveat to that is you can submit for reimbursement for those expenses if it's for a substantially different purpose. Now, the Treasury Office of Inspector General's guidance that came out subsequent to that basically stated that cities and local governments can assume that public safety expenses are substantially dedicated to COVID-19 response. So there's, they're basically saying that they recognize that public safety agencies have been so impacted by COVID-19 that there's really no proof needed. It's just assumed that they are substantially dedicated to COVID-19 response. And Chief Clark is on the line if there's any further clarification on the potential or the impacts that they faced and the operational changes they've had to make in response to COVID-19. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, well, it's perfect, exactly the information I was looking for. Thanks so much, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you, three quick questions. What is continued COVID-19 support in terms of how it relates to the community, or continued COVID-19 support to the community? What does that mean? I mean, I'm curious if we're going to put some definitions behind these things, that we're going to lay out what exactly COVID-19 support to the community means, if it's not going to be regulated by the federal guidelines? Or are we going to stick with the federal guidelines relating to what that means, or what community support means within the federal guidelines? Or are we going to expand on that? And I guess I can get all my, three of my questions out, because I don't know that we have answers to all three of those right now. But more to Councilmember Gamblin's point about how EFOR is performing COVID-related or COVID-19-related activities. I guess if we include Medic 1 in there, Chief, then I can understand that. But are you being called out on calls that are specific to COVID-related issues? I mean, I would assume when you go into a call for a fire or something like that, you're, you know, wearing PPE at a level that some nurse or doctor would be proud of because you're in full fire gear. But I don't know. I mean, I guess I just want to figure out whether or not you're getting, if you're, how you're addressing COVID-related issues as it relates to your everyday thing, and is that what we're addressing? And the third question was relating to periodic reporting. Today, I don't think we've had a report yet, so I kind of was curious to see if we could put some more boundaries around how frequently the periodic reporting will be, maybe a weekly or bi-monthly or something like that, that would allow us to get a better grip on what's happening and how things are going. Thank you.
Okay, so I think the first question was probably for you, Mr. Sugg. I think the second question was a Chief Clark question, and then the third question was probably an Andrew question. So let's start with Mr. Sugg.
Yes, thank you for your questions, Councilmember Ritchie. In regards to your first question, if I understood it correctly, you're asking about what is the definition, or what does continued COVID-19 support mean? And by continued, we are referring here to the fact that the city has already put about a little over $1 million towards COVID-19 support in the form of grants for businesses and for nonprofits, and also to help support government operations as it transitions to telework. So in that same vein, to continue that would be to continue to grant more funds to our nonprofits, to our businesses beyond the November 30 deadline that's specified by CARES. So the next, like I mentioned, the next agenda item is to discuss the second round of business and nonprofit grants. In my mind, that would be an example of continued COVID-19 support, is pushing out these grants in the future as, you know, subsequent ways of COVID come, and as the impacts of COVID-19 are continuing to be felt by businesses. And I think part of the continued support will depend on kind of what the council wants to do with the money. But I would assume it's in the same vein as what's already being described by the federal government as far as their guidelines on how it should be used. I would think we would be allocating it in a similar way going forward.
Thank you. Chief, are you on the line? Chief Clark?
I am, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes. And could you, can you answer for him what the fire department is doing different for COVID?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to answer, it might take me a minute here, so I'm going to ask you all to bear with me, because frankly, I haven't done my job well enough. If all of you do not understand how severely impacted the services for east side fire and rescue have been by COVID and the impacts that have on the community, I've got a fairly lengthy list here, I won't read through all of them, but understand that there is not a single action that is being taken by east side fire and rescue that is not first COVID-19 related. And that includes fire calls, which I'll get into an example, but I encourage you to drive by our headquarters, don't stop, please. But drive by our headquarters sometime this next week, you'll see that we are interviewing 400 new candidates, because we have holes to fill, and we can't, our hiring process cannot wait until after COVID-19. You'll see tents set up throughout our parking lot, because we have to do outdoor interviews with these individuals so that we can have a safe space for people to come in, even with masks. So when thinking about this, we're taking precautions at every level. And every COVID-related call, whether Medic 1 responds in our area or not, we are there first, we are the first responders for Medic 1. Medic 1 is simply the ALS support, which is the advanced life support, but advanced life support is always preceded by basic life support. Our firefighters no longer respond in the same manner. We have created no less than two dozen new protocols that will be here indefinitely. To paint a few examples for you, our dispatch center does not take a phone call from 911 that does not first start with a question of other flu-like symptoms in the household. That is for our safety of our responders, and most importantly, to prevent the COVID-19 from spreading outside of a household if it's there. As a precaution to that, we no longer respond, our crews of three no longer respond into a home as a group of three. We arrive on scene, and we use what we call a scout method. One person goes to the door, knocks on the door, makes patient contact, interviews the patients to ensure that there are not flu-like symptoms that we need to take a higher precaution for, and then summons the rest of the team to come in. Of course, our PPE and monitoring of our employees come into play. We have quarantined over the course of the last eight months, no less than two dozen employees. It is a frequent impact. Now, our impact is employees being contacted off duty. We have one current employee who's been in quarantine for 23 straight days because he has encountered three different people in his family at varying stages of COVID-19. Of course, when our employees are quarantined, they're not available to us, and we're paying overtime to backfill those positions. Fire calls, we had a fire in Samamish that I'll use as a direct example of this. Actually, the morning of our call with Tony Hanson, we were dispatched there. The first call, when we get a fire, what I do is I go to my phone, I have an app that I go to to read the summary of what's going on in an incident. The first question when I go, when I toggle over now is, are there flu-like symptoms in the home? The reason we ask that question on a fire call is because invariably, when we show up on a scene, there are usually people congregating on the outside, usually pointing to the house that's burning, even though it's pre-evidence that it's burning, but that's a human nature. When we step off of our rig, we're not wearing our air masks. In fact, we're wearing our turnout gear, we do not have our medical PPE on. We need to know if there are flu-like symptoms in the household, so that as we're interacting with the family, we understand a level of precaution to take. So it even impacts our fire calls quite dramatically, the amount of time that we can interact. And then the last thing I think I'll note, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, of course, is what, probably this part of the debate, which I do not understand, I'll be honest with you, we qualify as qualified COVID-19 expense, and I'm hearing this from my colleagues around the region, because of how dramatically, not only us, but the police department as well, and our life has changed around delivering the services that we're used to delivering. Of course, you are all aware of the services that we deliver through 911, and that is the main reason we're here, EMS and fire calls, but it's not the only reason we're here. Every other service we deliver has been essentially completely halted. So one thing I'd like you to envision is that you've paid X amount of dollars for east side fire and rescue services over the years, you are not getting the same service level from east side fire and rescue this year, because our service levels have completely changed. Your citizens are no longer allowed to use our community rooms, they're no longer interacted up, allowed to interact with our firefighters, they can't walk into their fire stations, their kids cannot come and do a demo core on our fire truck. We don't deliver public education, we're not delivering firewise training and wildland prevention programs in your community. We, I can go on and on and on, with the schools that we're not visiting, with the interactions that we have at the stores, the interactions with the community, there are no fire inspections going on this year. All of the preventative work that we normally provide has been completely altered and changed. The equipment we purchase, the steps we have to go through, we are decontaminating, we have foggers that every time we have any kind of interaction in a room, in a vehicle, including our response vehicles, we're decontaminating that. That takes more time, and in fact, we decontaminate the police cars from Samamish when Chief Pinkley has a officer who's had to transport a prisoner or somebody who has COVID-19 or flu-like symptoms. We have a partnership where we take our units out over to Samamish in order to decontaminate those rigs, as well as anything else. So I think with, to sum up, I'll just say that there is not a portion of our service that has not been impacted by COVID-19, and there's not a portion of this service that will be back anytime soon. Things are drastically different, and they're going to continue. It's up to and including testing, and something I would like your community to start to think about, is when a vaccine is approved, and when vaccines can be disseminated en masse, there will be a role for firefighters disseminating the vaccines, just like there has been a significant role for firefighters in the testing phase. All these drive-through testing sites around King County have firefighters from all over King County, including east side, administering the tests and taking care of that, as will be the case, I'm sure, when the vaccine becomes available, and we are talking about that countywide now. So for that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, may I step in here real quick?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. So I just want to say this more for the public record than anything else, that I was pretty much opposed to this just from the get-go for a variety of reasons. I got to tell you, after the actions of the federal government today, and, you know, the ending of any future, or at least temporarily, or at least for the remainder of the year, any future action in the foreseeable future of an additional COVID-spending CARES Act monies coming from the federal government, the idea of there being a second tranche is gone. That affects me and how I vote here. I'll also add that the comments that Chief Clark just made, and I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I try not to come into these things completely with my mind made up, but I try to listen and try to, you know, think about what's going on. I can tell you that what the comments that Chief Clark just made, a lot of them weren't new, but a lot of it is new. And a lot of it is important for me to hear and to try to understand the impact that this is having on our community. And with the efforts that were made by the staff and the city manager to reach out to the Department of Commerce and try to figure out a way forward, and with the additional input now from Chief Clark and the actions of the federal government today, it's really changed my mind. And I'm supportive of this, if we can put together, what I'm hoping will be that third point that I brought up, and I don't want to hog all the time here, but, you know, how are we going to, you know, the periodic reporting component here? That's the part that I feel kind of, we need to put some parameters on it, and periodic's a word that I feel like can be mushed around. And if I just felt more comfortable about what we're going to see come out of this, and so with the council member, I feel like I know that the decisions we've made here about spending federal dollars, being reimbursable federal dollars, are that we're going to be accountable, and we can hold ourselves accountable about where it goes, that is frankly, the third leg of the stool that would earn my vote in support of this. So I appreciate your time, thank you. Thank you, Chief Clark.
Okay, and that leaves our third question, and I think that our, Andrew, could you answer that for him?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Ritchie for the question. I think one of the most important things with this plan is full transparency on how, one, we're spending money, and how this reimbursed- on how, one, we're spending money and how this reimbursement will be spent as well. We've already dedicated, or already spent roughly $1 million. And council's been, I'm assuming, aware of where that's money gone because the majority of that was approved by this council. It was small business grants, it was nonprofit grants, and the next thing on the agenda tonight is the continuation of these grants. We would like to also push this out publicly where every time a expense towards COVID response and recovery is made, it's put out on the city newsletter, or said on the city news site, on our website. We have Connect Samamish to be able to input questions and feedback from the community. We can do our own quarterly, same, no different than I report on every regular agenda meeting. We can talk about where this money's going. You know, you mentioned that knowing where the money's going, again, that is also a, a policy decision as far as, okay, if you wanna dedicate so much to small business grants through the next six months, so much to nonprofit grants through the next six months, that is entirely up to you. However, as Chief Clark mentioned, we still have some unforeseen expenses that we may not even know about, whether it's the facilitation of max vaccination clinics, CPods to be able to do that. If our community gets stricken and this virus gets worse and we have to now quarantine staff and public safety, and you're gonna have additional overtime expenses for backfill of police officers, you're gonna wanna save a little bit of that as well. And without the addition of any federal assistance or state assistance from this grant, it's gonna be important to capture those costs. We've been tracking this all along and continue to put that out publicly because there is, I believe, a lot of misconceptions about how this money and CARES, the difference between CARES and the difference between just COVID response recovery expenditures is. And yes, while what we've spent already could have been or is eligible as well, it's just as easy to spend it out of the general fund.
I like everything you said there, Andrew. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Ritchie, did you have any other questions?
I appreciate everyone's patience with my questions, and I have no more questions. Thank you.
Okay, then the next up is Councilmember Stewart.
Great. So Chief Clark, you and I had a great conversation a couple weeks ago. This is even more detailed. One of my questions, too, though, is it sounds to me like you have additional expenses that are COVID-related. And last time we spoke, you weren't getting any, any additional assistance. So could you speak to that a little bit? And I do have some other questions after this, but I'd love to hear more on, you know, are you getting the funds that you need to be able to handle all of this additional work and protocols and equipment, quite frankly, with the PPE that you're having to, to use?
Yes, Councilmember Stewart. So, so first of all, you are correct. There are no funding streams for the kinds of expenses that CARES Act provides to fire departments. As Andrew has been doing a great job for Eastside, working with how we get reimbursed for PPE, which is really on the, on the scale of what our expenditures are, is really small scale, but we're well, well-stocked with PPE. All other grant streams, like the CARES Act, fail to recognize fire departments as separate entities and do not allow for direct support to fire departments. Our lobby has been lobbying nationally for the next round of the CARES Act. It obviously is dead now, that we would be included, but we do not see that. It's not in the foreseeable future. As far as funding for our current operations, as the board is aware, as my board is aware, the second week of March, we ceased all non-essential operations from a budgetary standpoint to freeze the budget everywhere we could. We've got four or five roads and positions right now that are empty and many line items that simply are not getting funded so that we can divert those dollars to the more pressing need right now, which is COVID-19. We are fine to get through the rest of the year. We have a budget plan that's gonna be hopefully voted on on Thursday for the next two years. Of course, we're tight like everybody else, but we're, we're adequate. If the federal government gets to the point where they allow direct funding to fire departments, then we will have access to that, but we are fine right now based on the plans that we put in place and what our partners have supported.
Well, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. I would assume that you'll let us know if that changes, if you do start to have additional expenses that you aren't able to cover. Okay.
Absolutely. My board knows on that shot. I'll, I'll-
Okay. And as an aside, obviously a different topic, but it sounds like you said that the budget will be getting voted on this week, so maybe we'll get a report from our contacts on the EFOR board on that, an update before that gets voted on this week.
That will set out-
That certainly seems like some- Okay. It'd be great to cover that. That seems like a pretty important topic. Anyway, going back to the, the COVID, one of the things I have concerns about, and I, I too appreciate the gravity of what's going on at the national level. I guess I have a slightly different take on it, while it's quite annoying that we're gonna punt on possibly the most important, you know, legislative item that Congress needs to deal with right now. I kinda hear we're gonna get new funding either in mid-November or we're gonna get it in January, right? So either, either, you know, Trump wins and he gives it to us in November, or if he doesn't, and Joe Biden comes in and we get funding in January. And the reason I, I think that's important is because I do think it's critical that we get really crisp on not just the timing of the reporting. I would like to see it rather frequently, weekly, doesn't, you know, might be too much, but at least twice a month, and more specific. So I think tonight was the first time we got some detailed numbers on the money that we've spent in terms of, you know, the, not the stuff that we've allocated as a council to grants, but the expenses that we've incurred as a city. And I would like to see it at even more of a detailed level. And I'd like to put a timeline on us spending this additional money, not because I want to be frivolous, but because we are seven months into this crisis and people need the money. People are hurting. Mayor, you, you read out about the affordable housing challenges that are happening, that we already had acute issues in the region before COVID, and it's only made it worse. So I would like to see us get really crisp on our reporting and get really crisp on when, putting a timeline on when we're gonna spend this money because if our community doesn't have a need for it, there are tens of millions of people around the, the state and around the country who certainly do need this money in a very acute way. So I just, I'd like to see us get crisp on that. And, and if that's the case, then I think I can get behind this plan. Otherwise, I have concerns that, that we, we have this money and then if we do get more, you know, we're either spending, we either have a need and we spend it on that need, or we don't have a need and we make sure that the money gets to where it needs to be. I guess is my point. So thanks for that.
Okay, next I have got Councilmember Trinh, followed by Councilmember Ross.
First, I'd like to thank Councilmember Jason Ritchie for asking this question because that was mine as well, how this COVID has affected Eastside Fire and Rescue. So thank you, Chief, for sharing what's going on there. And I just wanted to thank the staff for all the work that you guys are putting forth on this during a real difficult time and, and the, the fact that you're just showing some mercy and grace. And so I too will show mercy and grace and finish my conversation. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, this has been very confusing to the public. And to set some of the facts straight, one assertion that I've heard commonplace is we're holding the money, votes we need are not getting it. And the reality is we have not received any money to date. In fact, we have advanced over $1 million to not-for-profits, businesses, and reimbursement to keep the city running with laptops and PPE. As on, called out on the slide by Mike Sugg earlier. Number two, EFOR gets the, the entire benefit, well, or rather we back up. EFOR, by getting the benefit, it frees up funds, 2.9 million, because it's stipulated or assumed that existing budget is a much different purpose. By freeing up the funds, it carries the advantage of elongating our disbursement if we need money in past November 30th for other dispersments we will have in hand. In fact, Samamish has not been tracking quick enough in identifying or needs that equaled 2.9 million, certainly not before November 30th. So it goes back to an assertion that this is unethical and fiscally irresponsible. It's absolutely, absolutely the opposite. From a city perspective, we're giving ourselves the maximum grant opportunity at 2.9 million, irrespective of timing, and that 2.9 million is being closely tracked, one over 1 million so far, and we're gonna continue to track that 1, 2.9 million. And by flowing it through EFOR, it's a very, very, very strong justifiable, even confirmed by the Department of Commerce. In fact, they complimented our approach and even suggested other jurisdictions follow it because grant, seeking grant reimbursement is a very complex process. And if we break this up into a bunch of mini-grants, it's gonna be very, very hard for the city to recover funds by flowing it through EFOR with a very strong justification. We'll get our credit very quickly and be able to apply budget savings repurposed to those other organizations that we need. And as far as from a federal level, we also are being responsible in tracking. We have this attachment A of our grant, for instance, from the last round. And effectively, they're gonna provide receipts and they certify under perjury, penalty or perjury under Washington law, but it's truthful. So we're making sure that our grantees are actually using the funds for the purpose. So we're not effectively just handing out federal government money. So it's absolutely fiscal responsible from a federal perspective and from the city's perspective, maximize our opportunity to help those in need. So thank you. That's all I wanted to help clear up.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, hang on. I'm going to, I have to go back to where I was here. Okay, Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, so I'd just like to thank Councilmember Ross. Very well thought-out analysis, very well put on an issue that is kinda complex and misunderstood. That's the best explanation I've heard so far. I would like to address one thing. There's an assertion that we either use the entire $2.9 million by November 30th or we make it available to other people who need it. It is very financially dangerous. It's assuming that there will be more funding available within a short timeframe, which we've just heard the federal government directly said that they are not funding anything in a short timeframe. So it's very irresponsible to say, spend it all right now or give it to people who need it outside of Samamish. When we have the ability essentially to put this money in a reservoir, if we need it quickly, spend it quickly. If we need it slowly, then we can spend it slowly, but it leaves all of options open. So I, I think this is exceptional idea. Our emergency manager deserves kudos that Andrew is participating in this and worked on this for us and came up with these ideas. Excellent. But it, it seems a very well thought-out way to look at this. It gives us all of our freedom. We need the money now, we can spend it. We need it later, we can spend it. It makes very good sense. Thanks so much.
And Deputy Mayor? I think you're muted. Can't hear you. Okay, Kristi, we still can't hear you. She's left. She's coming back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there you are.
Okay, sorry I had to leave the meeting. I don't know if I'm still on the queue or not.
Yes, you're all right.
Okay, so I was just gonna provide the direction that's needed from council, and I was gonna make a motion and direct the city manager to submit the EFOR COVID-19-related expenses to include any other documented COVID-19-related expenses determined by staff to the State Department of Commerce for full reimbursement of the city's allotment of coronavirus fund, total $38 million.
I second.
Second.
All right, I still had questions, but, all right, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, and I'll ask my questions later, I guess.
Can I say a quick?
Do you wanna speak to your motion?
I, I do. I think, you know, our, our city manager and our fire chief and everyone else who's had their hands on this, so I think that's Andrew and Mike Sugg, I think they've all worked really hard on this. They've had a lot of conversations, making sure that every I was dotted and every T was crossed, making sure that Samamish was doing what we could. And, you know, to hear what Mike Sugg said earlier today relative to, you know, his conversations with the state, which is, you know, we found a really good way to utilize our funds. And I think it's great because we're gonna have the ability to help businesses and people in Samamish long after a lot of other jurisdictions might be able to because there is going to be a gap in funding from the federal government. So anyway, I, I guess I just really wanna say, you know, thank you to staff for working so hard and making sure that what we're doing here is, you know, something that we can do. And I think we've now confirmed that. And just to say thank you for finding a creative way that allows us to accept our help long beyond the deadline.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I mean, I was, I happened to have walked into City Hall when I, I saw them finishing up on the phone with the, with- with Commerce. I've never seen so many happy faces and high fives and jumping up in the air. I mean, they were just thrilled because they had this person telling them, yeah, you guys are doing it right. People ought to be doing it this way. And so I'd never seen so many happy people in my life. I mean, it was, it was incredible to see the, just the camaraderie going on. It was just incredible. It was, the vibe was just incredible. Okay, so any other discussion with council before we vote?
I'd like to offer an amendment. So I move that we amend the main motion to require a bi-weekly report from staff on all of the expenses and spending on COVID, including PPE, IT, cost-related physical workplace changes, monies allocated to human services, specifically for COVID-19 relief, not to include the regular budgeting for human services and monies allocated to other aid-like small business and not-for-profit grants. And I would also like to require that the full $2.898 million be distributed to these organizations' causes and needs by January 31 of 2021, which should give us plenty of time for the federal government to get another round of funding to us, no matter how the election turns out.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a amendment that we have to address. And, well, she's already spoke to the amendment. Is there any other comments or questions on the amendment?
I'm in there.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I think my first question- Yeah, I think my first question is for staff, which is, one, how realistic is it that you can give us a report on a biweekly basis? I am not, I, I don't know how much workload that is. I don't know if you even do them biweekly, or if monthly makes more sense. And secondarily, I do not want to tie our hands having to spend all this money by January. We don't know when the federal government will give it to us. In fact, our CARES act dollars came from the state by way of the federal government. Even if they pass something in January, we're going to have that money in January. We won't, the state won't have figured out what they're going to give to Sammamish. I don't think we need to hamstring ourselves artificially with a date. So I would be opposing this amendment.
Mr. Stevens, I know you spoke to us about schedule for reporting earlier. Could you repeat what your schedule was and then also address the date concern that the Deputy Mayor has?
Absolutely, Mayor. One thing we could definitely do is when we do have any COVID-related expenses, we can be publishing that on the city website. And since I already give COVID-19 updates at every regular meeting, I'd be more than happy to include a update on where this money has gone, how we're spending it at each one of those updates as well.
Okay, perfect. I thought that's what it is.
Mayor, council. Mayor, council, this is Dave. I'm a bit under the weather, so I've just been monitoring everything. I can appreciate the accountability. I'm all for accountability. I think that the monthly reporting from a financial standpoint and then can be accomplished. But let's do that monthly, and we can bring it back through the emergency manager if that's what the council prefers as the mechanism. But we'll be tracking things internally. But I hate to get us tied up in the minutia of meeting this when we don't do that on a biweekly basis for anything else. It's just not necessary, I don't think.
Okay, is there, okay, Councilmember Ross?
He's on mute.
I think you're on mute.
I think you're on mute.
Try again, let me try again. I don't, I don't think that reporting is necessary. I think the smallest number is the amount, less than 300,000. The rest we know, we passed from the council for grants issued, so we can do our own math, stack up newly approved grant amounts dispersed. Also, as far as the deadline, I don't want to give an artificial deadline. I think Deputy Mayor is spot on that we don't want to box ourselves in. In fact, to Councilmember Gamblin's point is we have absolute flexibility, early or late, but let's not put any restrictions on when we can or can't disperse. Let's make sure we are dispersing to those in need, and that's part of fiscal responsibility. And I'm very pleased that our staff is reaching out to the nonprofits on a regular basis to make sure that they're doing well, or if they need help. And we'll continue to do so. And then the outreach for this round two of grants will also address needs in our community. And so we'll continue to reach out, continue to identify need. But we don't want to, I don't think we should create an artificial deadline. So I don't support the amendment.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Councilmember Stewart, sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine amending my amendment to be monthly. I just think that in terms of transparency, since there has been a lot of concern in the community, that it would be really good if we could get a little more crisp and detailed on it. I think we have the data, and it's just a matter of sharing it. And I think from a reporting standpoint, this is the first time that we've gotten a more specific number in terms of what expenses we've incurred as a city, and I think that that's important. In terms of deadlines, I, I'm not trying to impose anything artificially, as much as I'm trying to say that we need to make sure that this money gets spent as intended. And I am concerned with the no deadline at all. So maybe we can have more discussion about what an appropriate deadline is, but to leave it open-ended, it's a lot of money, right? It's $3 million. And that is a lot of money to just say, we're going to put it in the general fund and we don't have any restrictions on it. And so I just want to make sure that we are committing as a council to getting this money into the community as it was intended. That this funding, this money that came through, from the federal government through the state, is intended to get out into the community so that people are spending money, so that we're helping businesses, so that people aren't losing their homes, they can pay their rent, so businesses can pay their rent, and people can get food. And I just want to make sure that that's happening, given that we are already seven months into this. And while we have allocated money, and that's great, we're pretty far into this. And I just think we need to have something that says we're going to make sure it gets out into the community in a timely fashion, and that it doesn't just sit in our general fund until next year, and then a quarter after that, and a quarter after that. So I'm open to hearing a discussion about what an appropriate deadline would be, but to leave $3 million in an open-ended fund doesn't seem fiscally responsible to me either.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to take a comment, because otherwise, if I don't comment, then I get cut off. And first, we're at 2 million, because we've already spent 1 million. But I also want to comment, I agree that I would like to see bookends put on it as, that the council agrees that the money is spent on PPE, that the council has the agreement that that money is earmarked for COVID funds, that that money is, yes, it's in the general fund, but it can't be used for anything other than what its purpose is. And I don't, I don't want to, you know, I want to make sure that the council, I would like to see the council make that agreement to make that very clear, that though that money is in the general fund, it is not to be used for any other reason but for COVID relief. And that's the purpose. And it's to be used under the same guidelines that the federal government had. And I think that should be, that should be considered, and that should be the guidelines that we're using. That would be, I mean, I think that's, that would be the number one thing. I agree with Councilmember Stewart that we need to have updates on a regular basis. And I think monthly probably, because monthly is when the statements, the financial statements and everything come back. And that seems to make the most sense. So yeah, that clearly would be the easiest for everybody. But, you know, if you're giving reports every other week, you can easily say, hey, we had to do this. To put a end date on it kind of defeats the purpose. But I also agree, if we don't have a sunset date on it, then we could be hanging on forever. So I see the point that she's trying to make. And I don't know, maybe you could have a, maybe you have something in mind, but I think her point is well taken, that to leave it open-ended, perhaps is not the best idea either. Because you don't want to have it just sitting there, you know, 18 months from now. Or you might. I mean, we don't know how long this is going to go on. So, you know, perhaps, Dave, maybe you have a comment, Chief Clark, maybe you have a comment, Andrew, maybe you have a comment. But I think her point is well taken of, you know, what do you think about having, do you think there should be an end date? But I think, you know, I think the comment is well taken.
Mayor, council, I think the monthly reporting is appropriate. Accountability is very important, and so is transparency. And I think when we come back, although an end date is, I look at that as more of a policy issue, the monthly reporting administratively. We are here at the beginning of October. We can certainly revisit, every time we report, we can also report on the balance. We can report on where our internal staff is in meeting with our nonprofits or our business, so our businesses, and give you a status report of where we're at in progress. And then the staff, excuse me, the council can revisit our balances and think about that over the next month, about setting out some goals. I understand, I think I recognize too, we don't want this money to linger on. From staff's standpoint, we never imagined anything but COVID guidelines, and that we will track it according to proper accounting procedures under the direction of our finance director, our Aaron Anton, so that when we do have it in the general fund, it's appropriately accounted for, and they do a journal entry for that. So we will be able to track it for our own internal audit purposes. But I say, give us a little time, give yourselves another month to think about whether or not an end date is appropriate, or some goals and milestones like we do on many projects. But just, just a thought, that's, that's what's going through my clogged up head at the moment.
Any other, okay, so we have a amendment on the floor. Councilmember, can you repeat your amendment?
Yeah, I think there are three or four more people in the queue, Mayor, I'm sorry. I think Jason, Chris, and Chris.
Oh. Oh, I thought you did all these. Okay, so Councilmember Ritchie.
Yeah, well, I was basically going to say everything that the mayor just said. I agree, align myself with everything she just said, that it is, I see the point, and I also agree with, it's a difficult situation we're in, and I think it's important for us to keep the money. I also agree, literally writing and crossing out as people are talking, with everything that the city manager said, that we're going to have updated information, and it's going to be stuff we can review as we're going along. I guess I'm going to propose to the amendment motion maker that we put a review date, not a sunset date, but a review date of March 31st. I don't know, I'm just picking March 31st as a date when we can reevaluate where we are. Whatever happens between now and then, we will have the chance to review it. But if you want to put a hard date on it, a review date rather than a must-spend-by or a sunset date may be more appropriate because of the things that the mayor mentioned. There's just so much we don't know. So I would be in favor of something less firm in language than a sunset. I'm calling it a review date and maybe putting it out a little further as per the city manager recommendation and taking that angle. But I appreciate and aligned with everything the mayor and the city manager had to say. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, the first part of the mayor's comments about making sure that 2.9 million goes towards CARES qualified is no surprise to any of the council members. All seven of us have been committed from day one to make sure that we are utilizing those funds and not using it for donuts or something else. We're absolutely going to use 2.9. I don't object to formalizing it. In fact, I'd be very supportive of formalizing that we're committed to putting that 2.9 million CARES allocation or freed up capacity to CARES-related, we've spent 1 million already, we have 2 million to go. And, and then, so that first part, I think, is easy for us all to get on board on the amendment, that part. The second part is the follow-up. And I'm thinking through, and I, maybe we can tear up all our amendments and start fresh after we all comment, think what the best solution is on the second part, other than making sure we're spending the 10.9 on CARES. We have three meetings a month, and the second, third meeting of the month is the, is a general meeting that we may approve additional funding to, say, businesses or other dispersments, CARES-related or COVID-related. So it would make sense that we'd have a report out the first meeting of every month, which would capture the prior month's activity, the council action, and further incurred costs. So maybe the best way is to have a monthly review on the first meeting of every month going forward, and we'd be able to keep a track of how we're, how much of that 2.9 we've utilized. Now, whether we, to Councilmember Ritchie's point, do we reevaluate, 3/30, I think we reevaluated monthly with that cycle, that we just looked, okay, we have balance to go, we've only spent 200 since last month. Has our needs in our community really, are we not realizing the needs of our communities? Should we reach out and learn more? It will trigger action to making sure we're proactive in helping our community. So I, I'm, I'm anywhere from what Councilmember Ritchie says, checking 3/31, but I'm also supportive of a first meeting a month review and status of the balance to go of 2.9 billion.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I like Councilmember Ross's idea of kind of starting over on this amendment. And honestly, I don't even know if we need an amendment, and here's why. I think the city manager's made it clear he's committed to giving us monthly report outs, or, you know, maybe sooner if there's been COVID-related expenses. But I think, you know, us trying to put a deadline on when we should spend this money is like us trying to figure out when they're going to come up with a vaccine for COVID. It's just, we just don't know. And we're making assumptions on what the federal government is going to do as far as stimulus package. And then we're going further in assuming that we're going to get some of that money. We have no idea. And so to play it as safe as possible, this council never loses the ability to come to a meeting and say, we need to spend that money tomorrow. So trying to decide tonight on when we should spend that money, I think, is probably not the best use of our time this evening. We can say at the next meeting when we want to spend it, if we have more information, by next week. But I'm of the mindset that we know we're going to spend this on COVID-related expenses. When we spend it, we don't know, because we don't know what the future holds. We have no idea how long this is going to be going on. A lot of experts are saying, when are we going to COVID into 2022? So let, again, let us not artificially hamstring ourselves with dates, because this council never, ever loses the ability in any given meeting to say, we want to spend that money by X date.
Don't say 2022. I keep telling my husband this is going to be the first year that's going to have 13 months. Okay, so next up, I have got Councilmember Stewart.
So Mayor, I'm, I'm happy to withdraw my amendment and may offer a new one if Councilmember Ritchie is willing to allow me to do that, since he was my second.
I'm more than happy.
Okay, great. So I would like to make a different amendment, and, and that would be that we require monthly reporting on all of the expenses that are, and I'll just say COVID-related. I have them listed out prior. And I think, Mayor, you made a good point, which is all of the intended purposes from the federal government, but that include the PPE, IT costs, costs related to physical workplace changes, monies allocated to human services that are COVID relief-related, and monies allocated in aid like small business and not-for-profit grants. So again, monthly reporting on that. I do still think we need to have some sort of a sunset date. We certainly, as a council, always can come back and amend that. But I think it's really important, from a fiscal responsibility perspective, that we don't allow this to linger. So I'm happy to push that out, to say that it could be October of 2021, which gives us more than enough time to deal with it. If we are in fact still in the throes of COVID, I have no doubt that we will have spent the additional $2 million by then, because there will be, things will be rather dire. But if things do start to improve, which I'm hopeful at some point that will happen, my fear is that by not having something on here, that things could linger and things could get lost. And I don't want to see that happen. So my amendment, again, is that we require a monthly report until all of the funds are spent, and that all of the funds need to be, let's say, committed by October 31st of 2021.
Okay, any questions, any questions on the amendment?
We don't have a second yet, right, anyone?
I need the second. Sorry.
Can you restate the amendment, please?
Yes, so that we would require monthly reporting until the entire 2.898 million of CARES Act funding has been distributed. And that would be, again, it would have to be COVID-related, and that all of those monies are committed by October 31st of 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, now, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. And speaking to my amendment, I just want to thank the mayor for her comments, because I think we're all on the same page here, right? We just, I think we need to, and Councilmember Ross as well. I think it's important that we formalize some of this. I think all of our intentions are good, but we know that certain roads to certain places are paved with good intentions. So it's probably really good that we formalize the reporting requirements, and that we formalize what these dollars can be allocated to, and that we do give ourselves a bookend, as the mayor put it, which I really like.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Let's see, let me look. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I can appreciate what Councilwoman Stewart is attempting to do here. I really can. I just, I think it's so hard. Who would have thought that in October, we'd still be doing these remote meetings? You know, I just, I can't, I can't support the amendment because we've given ourselves a date that we've essentially pulled out of thin air. And I think, again, I really do appreciate the sentiment behind putting a date on there. And I mean, I support the idea of spending it in a timely manner. But to put a date on that, you know, is arbitrary by nature, just, I can't support because, you know, what if this is going on longer, and we've been forced to spend money that people in our community still need beyond that date? I think this council is committed to putting that money to use as intended and where it's needed. But I don't think that we know how long. And my gosh, maybe we'll spend it before October. We just, again, we don't know. And because we don't know, I don't think putting dates on this is in our community's best interest.
Okay, Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, I absolutely support commitment to earmark the 2.9 to COVID-related. The date of October 2021, I don't think it's necessary. Again, we think the monthly reporting will keep our feet to the fire, and that we will continually assess it on a monthly basis. So I think just putting an end date doesn't make any sense, because we may end up finding needs through April, not October. And as we progress through the year, we'll be reassessing the situation. And so, again, I don't think, again, putting a date makes any sense whatsoever, because I don't think it changes our behavior as a council to review it monthly. Our commitment absolutely is to put the money into the community effectively and quickly.
Okay, and I'm going to comment before I get cut off again. I totally, I agree with what Councilmember Stewart's doing. I would hope we have given out the money and we're done with this by next year in October. But my fear is to put any sort of date on it. I just want to make, I don't want to put a date on it only because I want to make sure that, in the long run through COVID, that we are keeping a roof over our residents' head, and we are keeping food in their stomach, and we are doing what we are supposed to be doing. And to put any date on that, I fear jeopardizes us being able to do that. And so I just can't vote with a date on it, especially since we haven't let anybody go back and try to figure out if a date belongs on that. They were going to go back and think about it. So to just pull one out of thin air tonight, I'm just not prepared to be able to do that tonight. But I do agree that we need to put bookends on it. But I just, to do that without any sort of information, I just, it's too important to make sure that we keep our residents fed and covered. So I won't be able to do that tonight. Is there anybody else who's got comments on this? Okay, so we are going to vote on the amendment. Councilmember Stewart, would you repeat your amendment? Yes, your amendment.
Sure. We require monthly reporting from staff on all expenses and spending on COVID-related expenditures, including PPE, IT costs related to physical workplace changes, monies allocated to human services specifically for COVID-19 relief, not the regular budgeting for human services, and monies allocated to other aid like small business and not-for-profit grants. And that we require that the full 2.898 million be committed for expenditure by October 31st, 2021. Or earlier, obviously.
Okay, seeing no questions, I'm going to call for the vote on this, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, so then, we're going to go back to the original motion.
I have another amendment, then.
Okay.
I still think we at least need to require a monthly report on all of the expenses, and that we commit that all of this, the 2.898 million, be spent only for COVID relief-related items and city COVID expenses. So it would be, require a monthly report from staff on all expenses and spending on COVID-19, and that the full 2.898 million can only be spent on these COVID-related items, including PPE, IT costs, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll second that. Need to do it. Okay, any discussion? Great, okay. Seeing none on that, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Now, going back to the original motion. Okay, now, who had the original motion? Kristi, you had the original motion.
I did. I'm having all kinds of trouble here with my phone. Sorry. Yes, I did.
Can you restate the original motion?
Yep, it was to direct the city manager to submit the ESNR COVID-19-related expenses, and to include any other documented COVID-19-related expenses as determined by staff to the State Department of Commerce for full reimbursement of the city's allotment of coronavirus relief funds totaling 2.898450.
Excellent. Okay, any more discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven zero. Nicely done, guys. Thank you for all your work on that. Excellent. Okay, next, next up, we have, I lost my page, but I believe we have got the business. And that would be Mr. Sugg.
Good evening. Once again, Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst. I am joined by Christina Morgan, who we've brought on temporarily to help us out with the grant programs we have going on. This agenda item is to discuss a potential second round of grant funding for small businesses, which would include nonprofits this time around. You will recall that on September 1st, the council approved the distribution of 420,000 as part of the first round of grants. At the following meeting on September 15th, the council discussed the potential for a second round of grant funding, and assigned a subcommittee composed of Deputy Mayor Malchow and Councilmembers Ross and Stewart to study the matter and return with a recommended approach. That subcommittee met twice to review the first round grant process and consider updates to the program to ensure that the city is funding those who have been the most greatly impacted. The subcommittee is recommending the minimum eligibility criteria that are going to be shown on your screen in a second. One moment. So you should all be able to see this slide titled, Recommended Minimum Eligibility Criteria. The main changes in these criteria compared to the first round are, number one, that the FTE limit is recommended to be raised from 15 to 25 in order to allow more businesses and nonprofits to apply in this round. And 25 FTEs is consistent with what cities of Redmond, Bellevue, and Kirkland are using. The second main change from the first round is that the applicant must have a 25% or greater loss in revenue from quarter two of 2019 to quarter two of 2020. And this is a commonly asked question and a common criteria that other cities have implemented in order to determine in a quantitative matter the impact of the business. And three, the applicant cannot have received a grant during the first round of funding. So those are the three main changes being recommended when compared to the first round. The draft application for the second round, which is linked in the agenda bill for this evening, was updated to be consistent with these criteria. The application was also cleaned up in other areas, as described in the agenda bill. For example, a number of changes were needed to make the application apply to nonprofits as well as small businesses. The first round of the grant program was promoted in a variety of ways, through the newsletter, social media, our website, and even the mayor walking around to some of our storefronts to get the word out. In addition to these methods, for the second round, we may want to mail notification to the roughly 2,600 businesses and nonprofits that are on file as having a Samamish endorsement on their business license. So something to consider as far as promotion goes. Regarding the potential grant program timeline that's shown in the agenda bill, that schedule assumes a November 30th deadline, and therefore is extremely tight to get all that turned around in time for council approval at the November 17th meeting. Based on the previous agenda item we just finished up regarding CARES, there's no strict timelines, as we're going to be using city dollars rather than federal dollars for this program. So there's no November 30th timeline to contend with, and the schedule can become a little bit more realistic. Christina and I will need to go back and look at the schedule for potential modification, but it's likely achievable with a December 1st date for the council presentation and approval. And we'll just kind of work back from there to give applicants the most time to apply, as well as build in time for staff to do their reviews and promotion. So with all of that, I will turn it back over to the mayor for any questions or discussion.
Great, thank you. Well, I know I had questions, but I'm going to go behind Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thanks, Mike. And you've been a busy guy. So really appreciate this, really appreciate the work that we've been able to do on this. One thing that we don't talk about here is kind of the maximum amount of money that we're going to allocate, or if we are going to put a maximum on it. And in terms of the timeline, I would like to see a much longer application period, because I think even with the improved communications that we'll implement, which are great, people just need time. Like, some of those communications just take time to get to people and for people to kind of absorb it and be able to respond to it. So I want to make sure that our application period is a little bit longer this time, so that people can actually get those applications in, and if they have questions, they have time to get them answered. I do feel like we missed people this last time around because they either just didn't know, or by the time they found out, it was too late. So, and they didn't have enough time. So those would be my two points. I don't know that we have a sense of how many businesses we're going to, how many additional businesses we're going to capture, upping it from 15 to 25 FTEs. And I'm not sure that we really have a sense of how many additional businesses we might capture by adding the nonprofits in here as well. So, you know, do, Mike, are you looking for us to provide you with guidance on what the total dollar amount would be? And are we going to use the same criteria we had before? That, let's say, we set another $400,000. If we had, you know, 80 businesses apply, does that mean we would give $5,000 grants? Or are we going to do a lottery? I think it would be important for us to kind of define that before we put this out to people as well. So I'd be looking, Mike, to you if you have any guidance there on some of those items.
Yes, so the first round of grant funding, I believe we had the $98,000 grant from King County, which has passed through CARES Act. And then, the city council added an additional $152,000 to that in order to get to a $250,000, or $250,000 pool of funding that we could pull from. And then, at that point, since we didn't know, like we don't know now, how many applicants we were going to receive, we set that minimum and maximum grant award, where we said, the minimum we'll provide per applicant is 1,000, and the maximum is 10,000. And then, we just kind of waited to see how many applicants we got in. And in that case, it was the total funding pool, which was 250,000, divided by the number of eligible applicants. And then, every eligible applicant received an equal award. When that 250,000 was divided by the 42 eligible applicants that we ended up receiving, it was somewhere in the range of $6,000, $6,000 that each applicant would receive. And at the council meeting on September 1st, the council decided to up that to the maximum grant award of 10,000 per applicant, which bumped the total pool to 420,000 that we ended up giving out as part of that first round. So part of it's kind of a wait and see, you know, we're going to be sending a postcard to every registered business and nonprofit. I think the list is somewhere in the range of 2,600 businesses and nonprofits that have that Samamish endorsement to their business license. So it could be that we receive a much bigger response the second round of funding. So it's hard to say if we allocated a certain amount of money upfront right now, to know where that would kind of net out, once we divide that by the number of eligible applicants. So does that help at all?
It does. I still feel like, as a council, we should put something out there, in part because, you know, even just from an optics perspective, I don't want it to look like we changed the amount of money we allocate based on the people who apply. So I feel like we should, one, from a, you know, responsibility standpoint, how much are we looking to allocate to continue to help the business community, which is so important, and we know that small businesses are really struggling through all of this. But also, making sure that we're aware of how much money do we think we're going to need for human services as well. And so if we do think, you know, we might get a much bigger pool of people this time, it might be good to at least put a line in the sand. But again, we can always adjust, once we know if we get a huge number. But I do know that this time will be slightly different as well, because we are going to ensure that people identify what that need is. So everybody won't necessarily just get a blanket amount. So if somebody only has, can show that they had an impact, a COVID impact of $5,000, we're not going to give them 10. So that will adjust things a little bit differently this time as well. So I'd like to propose that we go ahead and we put out another $400,000 towards this, at least as part of what we put forth in the proposal that comes back to council for approval next time around, or when, what was it, November 1st, you said, or something to that effect?
Potentially December 1st, but we'll go back and look at the schedule to make sure that we can actually hit that deadline and provide enough time for applicants to get their submittals in.
Okay, but I mean, this will have to come back. Are we trying to approve this tonight? All of the criteria tonight?
It's up for the council to determine if they're, you know, after discussion, whether or not they're comfortable moving forward with the second round. Of course, we aren't under the same time constraints that we weren't, once were with the CARES Act funding. So that's what the council is discussing.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, then I'm going to go back to my question. So one of the things that I noticed, and then I wanted to comment on, was that it stated that you couldn't apply if you had received money in the first round. Part of what we're doing is that, and one of the reasons we did what we did with the CARES money, was that... CARES money was that we wanted to be able to take care of people long-term and help them along the way, and that sort of defeats the purpose because we've got businesses that aren't running at 100%. We've got businesses that are going to need help longer term. We've got businesses that fall into the top five and top 10, like your dry cleaners and your gyms and your restaurants and, and those sorts of places that aren't running at 100%. They're still running at 30 and 50%, and some gyms aren't even open yet. So, you know, so I'm, I'm going to suggest that we take that out of there and allow them to reapply under the agreement that they have to show that they spent the first $10,000 on, you know, PPE, you know, protocol that is, you know, under the guidelines and that they need more money. I don't think any of them in that position are going to have any problem doing that, but show that they've spent the first $10,000, you know, on PPE and that they need more money, and I think they should be able to apply if they need to. But to take them out of the pool, I think, is, is just wrong because the whole goal here is that we're, those are the people we're trying to help. So is, I'm just looking for, is anybody? Oh, who is that?
That's Chrissy.
Okay, all right, Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Just for context, why the committee kind of landed on not having businesses reapply was that part of the rationale, I think it was Councilmember Stewart, that was like, that had stated that businesses didn't know about it. We didn't do, that it was stated, we didn't do a sufficient job. I think Mayor Moran, you made a concerted effort to go out there physically and like let businesses know. So I don't know how many did or didn't. I think we probably all received the email from a local restaurant that said they didn't know about it. But we were trying to like go back and recast the net to capture any that we didn't on the first round. So that's kind of why we were also trying to kind of measure the magnitude of the problem because if we had businesses applying round one, but then there weren't people that didn't know about it, it would give us a better idea of, you know, the full impact if businesses really didn't know about the first round of funding. If council decides to change that and in this second round of funding, allow for businesses to come back that have already received, I would agree with the mayor, but I might even take it a step further, if, you know, we're going to have to have like, I, I don't know if we ask for receipts, and I think the mayor mentioned PPE, but I think, you know, it goes far beyond personal protection, you know, for our businesses. I mean, there are, you know, freestanding businesses, you know, dry cleaners, restaurants, childcare facilities, whoever is not able to operate in the same way that they were previously, that, you know, still have a lot of overhead, right? They're paying rent, they are still paying utility bills to keep the lights on and the heat on or air conditioning, whatever. And so I don't necessarily mind if, if we potentially go back and allow businesses that were in round one to come back for round two, but, you know, I think we were, I will say, use the word, a little lackadaisical in round one of how we did funding. We would, as a business owner myself, I know Karen is as well, and we both went and got SBA loans. The criteria to receive those loans and the amount of information you had to give both to receive the loan and then for forgiveness on it are quite expensive, and I think we need to be a little bit more extensive if we're going to keep recasting this net out. And frankly, you know, if we're going to talk about recasting it and for businesses that have like our brick and mortar, you know, $10,000 is not, it's kind of a drop in the bucket. For a restaurant that, you know, might have a $6,000 lease payment on a monthly basis, you know, a $10,000 grant isn't going to go very far if they're only at 50% capacity in their restaurant. So, you know, we could probably, our whole committee could probably go back to the, the drawing table if, you know, directed by the council. But I, I do, I, I'm not sure how I feel about Councilmember Stewart's suggestion about capping it at 400. I think it's hard to put, say, well, we should just cap it at, at that amount. We did that before, and then the council didn't stick with that. So why bother throwing another number out that we might not stick with either? I think let's just, the idea is let's cast the net out, let's find out what the need is in the community. But I also think we need to make these businesses prove that there is the need, and I don't mean to sound like the Grinch when I say that, but I really think it's important that we are giving CARES Act dollars to businesses that truly need help. And goodness knows, there are businesses in our community that really do need help, and I think we need to understand what the need is. And the need might be more than $10,000 for some of these businesses. But I'm also mindful of the fact that if this thing's going to be going on into 2021, 2022, God help us, you know, $10,000 grants, you know, here, there, are not going to save these businesses. We're artificially going to be propping them up, and they might collapse anyway. The idea is to get them through this entire COVID conundrum, and we just don't know how long that will last. So I don't want to put a cap on the dollars until I know what the need is, and then this council can evaluate what we want to do as far as how many grants we're going to give out based on the need, because otherwise, we're going to say, well, you get some money and you don't, or we say, well, this is what we had before. I think it was Councilmember Gamma, everybody's going to get $1,000, right? And that doesn't really help a business that has a $6,000 lease payment every month. So I'd rather find out what the need is rather than artificially capping it.
Okay, Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, I was on the committee as well, and the intent was, as Deputy Mayor articulated, is to capture those who didn't have a chance in the first round. That included not-for-profits and those businesses that didn't have a chance to apply. With that said, I, I'm not adverse to opening it up to repeat applicants, but I really do think that we got to be very careful talking about qualified spending. In some businesses, more than need 10,000, and some may not even get close to 10,000 in need when you start documenting with receipts what they need. So what I would recommend is if we do, open it up to everybody and don't disqualify those that previously applied, that we ask all applicants to provide, much like the grant pandemic that I flashed earlier, that they justify with receipts in advance, take a date, end of the quarter, 9:30, 2020, what is your impact, showing receipts and proof that that's your impact. So if you're applied in the first round and you only can justify 8,000, you're certainly not going to get second round money, but if you justify 15,000, then that justification for 5,000 extra dollars. Likewise, to keep it even more flexible and open-ended, there may be businesses that have substantially more than 10,000 to justify. We can make some judgment and not peanut butter spread these grants this round because we really need to be true to the justification of the funds, and that's our portion of fiscal responsibilities to this federal fund. And so I would, bottom line is, if we open it up to everybody, let's make sure, or even just new applicants, let's make sure we get the justification and proof that they have incurred a loss through, say, September 30th. And that also, some may say we only have 5,000 expenses, some may say we have 3,000 expenses, some may say we have 20,000 expenses. So without a range and without a total budget, and we've got 2 million balance to go, we can make some judgments on how to allocate the money once we got the data and the applicants and the real needs justified with proof and receipts.
Okay, going, okay, that's the last one I have in the chat box. Anybody else have any comments on this? Okay, where would council like to go?
Mayor, I have a question, and I think it's kind of where you're going with this, which is, I think we all want to help. We all want to help everybody who needs help, and that's great, and I'm glad we're all kind of rowing in the same direction there. I do think we need to kind of understand, so, you know, let's kind of play out the scenarios a little bit. What happens if, in, in doing a better job of communicating this, we suddenly get 500 applicants? Are we prepared to provide all of the needs, which is why I suggested that we have some sort of a cap initially, which we can always raise if we want to, but if we don't put that initial cap in, are we implying to people that we're going to grant everyone's requests? And if that's not the intention, if the need comes back and it's really huge, I think it's important before we have the list of people who've applied so that there can be no perception of any impropriety, that we say how we're going to handle it. And we did that in the first round where we identified that if we got more requests than we had money for, we had the idea that it was a range of grants and that it would also be a lottery system, that if we got more than we could handle, that all of the eligible people would be put in for a lottery, and then we could pull that out. So I think that those kinds of parameters are important to identify before we get the list of companies. Not that I think anybody's going to do anything wrong, but by identifying them ahead of time, we don't have to worry about anybody implying that anything's been done based on who applied. And I think that that gives businesses a little bit more information when they go to apply.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking for feedback from the council. Do we want to send this back to committee to discuss? And bring back, because I think there's a few issues that have been brought up, adding back in businesses that applied first, in the first round? And what is, you know, how will you handle if we have 500 businesses? What criteria do you want to use?
Mayor?
Pardon?
I was just saying, I was in the chat, I was trying to answer your question.
Yeah, so, I mean, it seems like we have a lot of, of questions that still need to be answered, and perhaps I could, should go back to the committee? And the calendar schedule?
If I can, I agree with you. I think, you know, Councilmember Stewart does have a point relative to not making it appear like we're going to give anybody that applies a grant. And I, I think instead of turning time here at 10 o'clock, which we need to extend already, that we should send it back for, I suspect our committee can probably come back with another recommendation for the council at, at our next meeting.
Okay, and we have got, Andrew, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
We do need to extend.
Okay, I need a motion to extend?
Who says extend to 11?
Oh, do we have?
11, it just covers us.
Okay, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, and we hope you better not be here till 11. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, all right, so Andrew, do you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Going to Councilmember Ross's point, I think showing impacts is definitely a realistic expectation. Showing receipts might be difficult. A lot of these businesses that have been closed down at 50, 25% are simply seeing a loss of revenue. So that is going to be a COVID impact, for sure.
Okay, well, I would recommend that you, perhaps you sit in on this committee because you seem to have a lot of the background that they would probably need to hear.
I'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure we meant like receipt, like from income, but receipts like you've paid a utility bill. Just for clarification.
Okay, excellent, so.
Sorry, can you say that again? I, I didn't, I'm sorry, Chrissy, could you repeat that?
Sure, when, when we mentioned the word receipt, I, I think I was thinking more in terms of show that you, you're continuing to have to pay a lease payment or a utility bill, rather than how much you've earned in receipts specifically from your business. I think we're trying to measure the magnitude of their deficit so that we can make that up potentially with a grant.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Let, let me, can I, can I add a comment on that? On Exhibit A on the initial grant, it, it does require all receipt expenses must be, must be submitted, so let's bring Exhibit A into our committee so we can look at that because it does ask for receipts. So what, what, what's that mean?
Yep, I think we just need to have this discussion there.
I would agree. Okay, so it sounds like you guys have a lot on your list to talk about. And then I think, outside of that, we have got council reports.
Mayor, earlier I asked about the, the EFOR budget and said that had been sent. I was looking through my mail, if you could just, about when was that?
Yeah, it would have been at the end of August because it came out, end of August, beginning of September, it came out with, when I sent out the, I came out with the final stuff for, the final wording and everything for the stuff for EFNR.
Okay, is, just at a high level, if the, if you guys are voting on a budget, how does that play into our budget process? Because we haven't approved.
That doesn't change, our numbers don't change.
Understood, but my, my question is, we haven't approved the budget, so is this just a recommended budget for EFOR that would then have to come back to the cities? Because what if a city, maybe not us, doesn't have the money or can't approve that much budget? Like, how, how does this work from a timing perspective?
Well, it, it doesn't change anything because it doesn't, nobody is, nobody's changing numbers this year at all. They've frozen everything, so nobody's numbers are going up. Do you see what I'm saying?
Maybe this is more of a, I kind of do, but maybe this is more of a question for the city manager then. So if, if EFOR, if we approve, if the EFOR board approves an EFOR budget, but the cities haven't approved their budget yet, kind of what's, it feels like a little bit of a circular reference, so how does that work exactly?
Well, I'm, Mayor, council, I'm not sure how the nuances have worked in the past, but we've worked very closely with EFOR in putting my budget recommendations to the council, which went out today, and they've frozen theirs. But I can recall, or help you recount here, very recently because of COVID, some of the cities that belonged to EFOR brought up the issue that they were looking for EFOR to cut back its costs, and that's not an option under the way the cities contract for services. And so EFOR has worked very hard to keep their budget frozen and in fact has deferred some expenses. I mentioned it briefly in my budget message, but we're, we're good. If, if there was a lot of volatility, then we might treat it differently, and I would bring that to the council's attention with some caveats, but we don't have that this year for this next biennial budget. We do, and I mentioned it in my We do, and I mentioned it in my budget message, that two years from now, there are deferred costs that EFOR is talking about and we should make note of it. And I make a recommendation in the budget message that we can talk about at the study session.
Okay, and I appreciate that you sent out your budget message, but I think you sent it out at 4 o'clock today, so I haven't had a chance to read that. I do look forward to it. I guess my question is, if EFOR approves a budget this week, but the cities haven't approved theirs, something feels a little bit off. I assume we're going to be okay, but I do know that other cities are having some financial issues. And so what happens if they don't have the money to approve their budget? Like, it feels like the tightening of that needs to be more of a, it's like a recommended budget for EFOR and then you have to go back to the cities and then come back or something? And that's what I was just trying to understand, how does that work?
Well, that would be part of EFOR's issue. And maybe we can talk to Chief Clark if he was still on the call. But that's a matter of their agency.
Oh, there we go. Chief Clark is hanging on.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief.
Dave, I am here. And so just to clarify, this is the same process that has been in existence since the contract was originally signed in 1999. The EFOR board does not make this decision in one night. We started a process, a very public process back in June for all partners were there and partner finance staff were there and have been informed, which is, you, the DINK and the ILA for having an approved budget in October is there for, or what has become our practice, so that it can inform the budgets of our partners to, it's no different than healthcare costs and LNI and numerous other factors that go into building a budget. You need to have a number to be informed on it. And by approving it in October, your budget is now informed on what it is, but your staff have been involved at a minimum June. In most years, we start in June. We actually started in May this year because of everything that was going on with it.
Okay, maybe from a council perspective, maybe one of the things we can do is, as we have these different committees, when there are budget impacts, that we make sure we can bring those to the council. I know, Mayor, you sent that out in August, but maybe it's something we need to make sure we take a minute and actually go through. Just because I think that they can add up, right? And I know that like Riot 8 had a budget number and we talked about it and how that number wasn't going to change. And so kind of got a little bit of a head nod from the council that that was fine if the number wasn't changing. Just to make sure that we're all understanding that. And maybe, you know, maybe I'm the only one who's feeling that way, but I just want to make sure, especially if we are going to go into some choppy waters here economically for the next few years. Probably wouldn't hurt for all of us to put forth a little extra effort to call those things out to fellow council members.
Yeah, and I believe Jamie, Chief, maybe you can confirm this for me. But I believe Jamie sends out that information as well.
Yeah, all of this has been in the minutes and for both our pack meetings and our board meetings. Should be in every month's packet.
Exactly. So not only do I send it out, but then everybody gets it from Jamie as well.
I don't think we do get that correctly.
We don't get it.
Okay, well, I'll double check.
I think, if I, first, I think the point that Councilmember Stewart is trying to make here is that when we have board members that are voting on behalf of the council, the council has to say, yes, you can vote on that budget. I don't think we have an issue with voting on the budget.
I'll forward that email that I sent out that asks that if you had any questions on the budget, you should let me know.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
I think, Chrissy, to your point, I think it would just be good if we just kind of did that as a more formalized process, just to make sure we don't miss stuff. And that, again, not that anybody's doing anything wrong. And I certainly have no problem with the EFOR budget, especially if it's staying the same. But I just think that this is how we keep each other informed. So, and especially if we're going to be taking votes on behalf of the council. I think we actually added that into our council rules that we needed to bring all of those decisions to the council and have the council make a decision before we could go back and vote on behalf of the council, if I recall correctly. Unless timing was, didn't permit that. Is that, isn't that correct?
That's correct. That's my understanding.
Any other discussion from anybody else? City manager report?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you. I don't have COVID.
Thank you.
Well, that is good to hear.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Everybody have a good week.